Thank you.
I think this. Good evening, and this meeting will come to order. This is the Puyallup City Council Study Session for Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can we all please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here this evening. With that, will we have the clerk, please call the roll?
Councilmember Gillan?
Present.
Councilmember Whitting?
Present.
Councilmember Dorr?
Present.
Councilmember Adler?
Excused.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor King?
Present.
Mayor Castman?
Present. With that, excuse me once, one moment. Councilmember Adler may be joining us later. I believe that she, she might be suffering from being under the weather a little bit, from what I understand. With that, let's move on to the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda items. We have three this evening. This is a study session. A study session, well, it is as it sounds. It's a time for us to learn more about particular issues. It's not a time where we usually make motions to pass particular code amendments or adjustments. It's just a time to learn and ask questions. It's a little bit different. Usually we have public comments at the beginning of every meeting. Now we will have public comments after we have the presentations, and instead of those public comments being three minutes, they're two minutes. Those are the rules that were established you know, years ago, and that those comments usually have to be germane to the actual subjects at hand. So they have to be, you know, in regards to item one A, one B, or one C. And I just tell that to you in case someone in the audience expects to have public comments right away. I just don't want your expectations to go, you know, unfulfilled. With that, we're going to move, oh, by the way, Councilmember Adler is present. I think that's pretty obvious. Thank you, Councilmember Adler, for being here. I had excused you previously. Let's move on to Agenda Item One A, Puyallup two thousand forty-four Preferred Alternative Draft Future Land Use Map. This is just a alternative. We have several months before we actually will be passing such a map from the legislature, from this, this body, but I do want the public to see at least what the staff at this point is coming up with. With that, I'd like to have Senior Planner Kendall Walls. Alex Dupay is a Dupay or Dupie? Dupie, come forward to give us a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Kendall Walls with the Planning Division, and I just wanted to do a quick introduction for Alex Dupie, who is our consultant with MIG for the project that we're working on for the plan update, and we have a draft future land use map that was provided in your packet with some description, a lot of content, but we'll try to buzz through and keep it fairly high level and, you know, let us know if you have questions. We will have times within the presentation for discussion, so we'll pause at those moments for, for discussion then. So I will hand it over to Alex. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the time tonight. Once again, my name's Alex Dupay. I'm the consultant, project manager for MIG and the Comprehensive Plan. So tonight, we are going to provide what I'll just kind of forewarn you is a pretty dense presentation. The goal of this meeting tonight is to step through all the major components of the draft future land use map, but also to align that with what we heard from the community as well as the environmental analysis that was completed prior to this evening. So we'll give a quick update on progress to date. We will look at and remind of the what the land use alternatives that we considered as a part of the draft environmental impact statement. We'll talk a bit about community engagement since we've talked with you last, and then get into the meat of the presentation, which is the draft future land use map. And so the goal for this evening is we are essentially at a critical point with the project. As you know, the requirements are to have the draft Comprehensive Plan move forward over the next several months, as Mayor Castman mentioned, ultimately to be adopted by the end of two thousand twenty-four. We'll be, I believe, we'll be very close to that date, but to be able to get to that point, we need direction on the draft future land use map so that we can complete our analysis, both from a housing and employment standpoint, to ensure that we're meeting our targets before Department of Commerce and Pierce County, but to also finish out the policy framework. And planning commission and city council have seen pieces of that planning, that, that policy framework, but we need this final piece to be able to complete those essential elements of the Comprehensive Plan. So what we're asking for of you tonight is to provide feedback on that draft future land use map, and we'll break it into pieces to step through the various elements and to essentially get agreement or identify what changes should occur for that map so that we can complete our analysis. The other piece of information and input we're asking of you this evening is to help us solidify the direction for middle housing. There are state requirements that we have to implement middle housing within the city of Puyallup. We have some recommendations for how we think that that could do forward, but we want to gather that input as well, too. That affects both policy as well as housing targets to address. So that is our goal for this, for this evening. Just as a brief reminder, we are three quarters of the way through the process. We've been working for about the last year, fifteen months or so, to start from refining the city's vision and guiding principles into land use alternatives that were vetted through the community as well as evaluated through a draft environmental impact statement. And we have wrapped those pieces up, so we're at spring slash fall of two thousand twenty-four, and we're really in the final stretch right now of developing that draft plan, vetting the policy framework, finalizing the future land use map, and ultimately developing a package for adoption at the end of two thousand twenty-four. So we're very close, but still some critical steps to step, to step through. Just as kind of a, you know, a bucket of how we, you know, kind of think about both the Comprehensive Plan as well as the environmental analysis that were required to complete by the state of Washington. We started this process through a determination of significance, which is essentially a State Environmental Policy Act term for we need to do some analysis on land use. And so we started that process early on with the first phase of engagement. Through that, we developed the alternatives that we'll review again this evening. We developed the draft environmental impact statement, which was released a few months ago and had public comments as part of that process. And now, as we get into the final Comprehensive Plan, we'll also be developing a final environmental impact statement. So that process is also continuing today. So when you get to that adoption package in the next few months, that final EIS will be a part of that. And that addresses any comments that we heard from the community as well as any additional information that was requested for additional analysis. So much smaller page count than what the DEIS was. I want to say that was about four hundred pages. This one will be much shorter. All right. So let's talk just briefly about the future land use map, and I want to remind you why we're here in the first place. And so as a part of the review and Comprehensive Plan update process, every city and county within the state of Washington is required to accommodate a certain amount of growth. And how that trickles down to the city of Puyallup is that from Pierce County, from PSRC, and the Department of Commerce, there are agreements across the region on how you accommodate that growth, both from a population standpoint related to housing as well as employment. So through that process, well before the Comprehensive Plan even started, the city of Puyallup agreed to take on approximately seventy-five hundred housing units and about fifteen thousand jobs. That sounds like a lot, but when you think about it over a twenty-year timeframe, that's about the same amount of growth you're actually seeing today. So it's a big number, but over twenty years, it's not as big as it sounds. But that's still significant. So do you have the right amount of land use? Do you have the right zoning? Do you have the future land use capacities to be able to accommodate that? That was really the kind of essential question that we had to answer early on. Just some other maps for context. You have an existing future land use map. This is your two thousand fifteen future land use map. It's in your existing Comprehensive Plan. This is what the city has used over the past ten years to review development permits, go after grants, you know, do any number of things related to land use, but really, you know, this map is essential for. And this map is about at the ten thousand foot level. So when you think of drafts, future land use classifications, those are generalized land uses. So it's mixed use. It's different levels of housing, certain types of commercial. And that's really implemented through your existing zoning map. So you'll see there are many more colors on your zoning map. That's because those future land use classifications are further disaggregated into those zoning designations, and those provide more specifics on what can happen today. And so where we're at for our process is to look at that future land use classification map. That's what happens tomorrow. The next step will be after this map is adopted is to update your zoning map and your zoning ordinance to accommodate those changes. So we'll talk mostly about the future land use map tonight, but I just want to show this to you just for context. The other element, I mean, this is again, one that was completed before the Comprehensive Plan started, is that Pierce County, City View, Puyallup worked closely together, develop a buildable lands inventory. So they look at all land within the city limits and the urban growth area to identify areas that are constrained through critical areas, which means wetlands, steep slopes, other limitations to development. They also look at vacant, redeveloped, or partially vacant properties. And so where would there be areas that could accommodate different types of growth? And this analysis is really essential for how we think about those targets, because this is what we start with. This is where we say, okay, this is where growth could occur. Is it the type of growth that we want? With this land, can we meet the targets that are assigned to the city? And so this is the piece of information that we started with about, about a year ago. So again, just as a reminder of where we went. So with that information, with the extensive community input we had, both through in-person and online survey work, we developed three alternatives.
Excuse me, Alex?
Yes.
I want to check with a colleague of mine, Councilmember Whitting. Do you want to ask a question right now, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, I would like to, to ask a question on that last slide. The, I'm looking down at the, at the bend in five twelve and, and there's a lot of blue around the, where South Hill Mall is and, and Lowe's and Home Depot and, and you know, it's a lot of commercial. And so you're designating that as underutilized. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. And so I want to clarify, this is from Pierce County, not from MIG. We didn't, this isn't our analysis. We refined it with permitted projects after this map was completed. Underutilized land is typically land that's developed, but the land to improvement value isn't to, isn't to a degree that that it's to a degree that it could flip. It could be something else. And often you'll see that, say, for example, on a residential parcel that's very large with a very small structure on it, the land is actually more valuable than the structure itself. And so those are, that's kind of a, a kind of typical way that you assign whether or not it's underutilized or not. So if the land value is more valuable than the, than the the structure itself, that can mean that it's underutilized. There's other things that happen within the buildable lands as well, too, like lock coverage, things like that, that can trigger some of those elements. But that's typically how it's done is through land to improve values. All right. So as we, as we started to develop the, the alternatives, which we brought to you several, several months ago, we developed three different alternatives, and the alternatives that you see in front of you, and I'll step through each one individually. These are alternatives that were developed through the initial public engagement process. If you remember, about a year or so ago, you had a number of maps that were heat maps that showed where different types of land uses, where the communities thought different types of land uses would be appropriate, whether that's detached residential, commercial, industrial, mixed use. All of those, we asked all of those questions about where that type of development should occur, and we saw strong concentrations within the city of specific land uses. So we took that information and we created, based on that, as well as the buildable lands inventory, three separate alternatives to be evaluated as a part of the environmental impact statement. So I'll step through these in just a, in order. Alternative one is a no action alternative. That's required as a part of the State Environmental Policy Act. So essentially, the no action alternative looks at what if you didn't change anything? What if you didn't change the zoning, future land use classifications? What if you didn't change any policies? Could you address the growth as well as the requirements from Department of Commerce and PRC at the state level that you'll be, that will have to do as a part of, of the Comprehensive Plan? And again, this is required. This is our baseline. And so we evaluated this based on what you have on the books today. Alternative two, and you'll start to see these bubbles pop up. Again, these are out of those heat maps that we, we got from the community. Alternative to focus is focuses growth. It looks primarily at your regional centers, downtown and South Hill, but it also identifies some other areas that the community said, you know, might be in good places to look at. The Meridian Corridor between the hospital and, and South, South Hill, East Pioneer and Shaw Road came up pretty much on every different land use type on that survey, really creating a strong community node there, even more so than it is today, but then also River Road. So, so from a focused growth area or focused growth alternative, these are the areas where we, we start to place that additional growth for those, for those targets. So comparing that to a distributed growth model, which is also aligned with what we heard from the community, it's still focusing on South Hill and downtown as your core regional centers, but looking at more of a dispersed type of development pattern. We heard overall, over and over through the community process as well as the community advisory group, that residents of Puyallup want walkability. They want access to services. They want solid transportation. They also don't want to drive for every, everything that they, they have to get. And so this starts to look at where are their opportunities based on the buildable lands inventory that also could support potentially community commercial, small-scale mixed use. You know, different scales in different parts of the city, but trying to address that desire from the community in a slightly different land use pattern than you have today. This, this option, as well as alternative two, also makes some assumptions for middle housing. You know, so what types of, what percentages of development do we think might, you know, middle housing, you know, kind of generate, you know? What's the potential turnover? And so we made some assumptions for each alternative that middle housing would occur within the city. And that's, you know, that's, that's going to be part of the policy requirements anyway, so we thought it'd be important to test. So those three alternatives went through a community process, one to develop as well as to evaluate. We developed the draft environmental impact statement that was available to the community for review. We also had a survey that looked at some of the policy work around that. And just to summarize some of the results of that, from a no action alternative standpoint, or from the alternative standpoint, the no action alternative would not meet your targets. So we know that based on the analysis, based on what was done in advance, it also wouldn't align with the county or regional policies. Because we, we basically were, were taking what's on the books today, not the new legislation. Alternatives two and three are consistent with statewide and regional goals and policies to, to be able to address that. And it also meets your targets to varying degrees for both housing and employment growth. And so, you know, we made some different assumptions depending on where we're at on the map, but both of those alternatives meet your targets as well as meet your policy requirements. As a part of the EIS, we also looked at it from a transportation standpoint, and I just want to point out between no action and the alternatives, the no action alternative actually has greater impacts than the action alternatives. And the reason why is we're not assuming any changes to the system. If you keep what's on the books now in terms of transportation improvements, you add that growth onto it, you're not, and you're not mitigating that, that starts to have greater impact. So that's why you see alternatives two and three having lesser impacts, because we do have mitigation as a part of that. So, you know, to be honest, not surprising, but you know, still wanted to share those findings. All right. So now let's get into the future land use map.
Do you want some comments regarding that? I, I can give you mine right off the bat. I, I actually think that a combination of one and two is probably preferable. Since our last discussion, the River Road corridor, turning that into a residential area has actually, I've, I've talked to many of the, the businesses in that area, and also looking at the budget of the city, how much we rely on that particular commercial area. Turning that into a residential area, I think would end up being a very poor idea. In fact, I think continuing the commercial that it does, other cities would be, are envious of that particular corridor. And I don't know if you're aware of the fact that most cities in Pierce County are at tremendous deficits. We're not in a deficit as bad as other cities because we have a good commercial base, and that River Road is a tremendous base that allows us to support police and et cetera, through the commercial entities that are there. So I would ask that my colleagues really rethink turning that into a commercial area, excuse me, into a residential, but keeping it instead highly commercial. Again, other communities would kill to have that particular entity, area. Also, I think that, you know, our medical corridor that you see going down from the South Hill to the hospital, that's good, but I wouldn't want it to be interfered with too much residential. There is so much residential going up that road already. But we have many offices along there that are medically oriented. We are about ready, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but our hospital will double in size. It's going to be one of the largest regional hospital areas and also an area for employment in the medical industry, probably in the state of Washington, because there are catchment areas all the way to Mount Rainier. That's huge. So I don't want to interfere with their ability and the employment that we will be able to get from that by taking very valuable commercial property and turning it into residential. And then finally, my comment on the, the dispersment. You know, when you go into communities, and I've done that, I've gone into communities in Idaho, and if you go down to communities in Palm Springs, et cetera, those places, they're very clear about separating the residential from the commercial. And they do that because it sounds, I think, very glamorous that you integrate commercial into a neighborhood, except for the fact you find that the, the drugstore cannot possibly survive off just the patrons in that neighborhood. Instead, they bring in loads of traffic. They have to. They have to be open at hours. I get complaints all the time about the stores we have in downtown with our current residences being open too late. You can imagine that going into one of our downtown neighborhoods, turning commercial areas in the middle of residential areas. So I'm really, you know, I don't mind the basis of Shaw Road there being more commercial because right now there aren't that many residential areas in there. It seems like a natural fit. So I'm, I think that's fine under slide option number two. But I do think that we have to be very careful, because we've always said the strength in this town is our neighborhoods. That is our strength. Is that we have very large residential neighborhoods. Many communities don't have that. Sumner doesn't have that, and I think they're at a disadvantage. Here we have enough heft in our neighborhoods that where we can support schools, we can do a lot of things that if we start slicing and dicing up our residential areas into commercial, I think we really will lower the livability. And I know you talk about walkability, but Puyallup isn't Seattle. We're not huge. Okay, we're not that big. I'd rather just improve the biking ability and other transportation ability rather than sacrifice the neighborhoods so someone can have a Walgreens in the middle of their neighborhood. I guarantee you, the neighbors in this town will be mad if that's the case. So I would advocate for, as I said, a combination of one and two by, but the River Road, I would not turn to residential. Keep it commercial. So with that, Councilmember Whitting?
You know, I'd just like to clarify a little bit about how this land use map works. You've described, you know, identified some areas of, of growth like River Road. And the distributed model has areas out in the city. You're not identifying which of those areas are going to be commercial and which are going to be residential. We could have a lot of commercial development along River Road and a lot of residential development in the, in the distributed areas. Is that, is that an accurate perception?
That's correct. And I'd like to clarify, so for these, these three alternatives, these were, these were a series of what-ifs. You know, these are, these are a series of what-ifs to be able to test. As we get into the recommended future land use alternative, we'll talk about specifics for each of those areas. I do want to clarify, too, since you brought up River Road, we're not proposing changing the underlying plan that currently exists on River Road. So that, that incorporates the commercial. So that that incorporates the commercial that you're discussing, but it also talks about mixed use and other elements. Some of the new elements in terms of community commercial nodes, those would be limited to specific intersections in limited parts of the community. We'll get into some maps that we'll talk about that will show these changes are fairly strategic in what we're looking at. And by far, the majority of the city stays exactly the same as it is now, with the exception, to be honest, of middle housing, which affects all detached residential zones within the city. So these, everything you're saying here, Mayor, is correct, we are not, but we are not recommending changing anything in River Road. We're acknowledging what's already on the books in terms of that that element, both mixed use as well as commercial. Councilwoman, did that answer your question on the neighborhood?
You clarified, thank you.
Proceed.
All right, so as I get, we get into the draft future land use map, and I appreciate this context, it helps helps me better my presentation to be able to focus on what the questions are, so thank you for that. We talked about both the input from the environmental impact statement as well as working through both community input and input from the community advisory committee. So we did have a group of folks, dedicated folks who went through many inches of documents to help provide and clarify and refine what you see in front of you today. But all that input is really encapsulated in the next several slides. We have also been meeting with city council, our community planning commission on a regular basis to gather input both on the policy level as well as some of the mapping. So that input has also been incorporated into what you'll see. From a staff standpoint and from what we've heard from all of that input is we are looking at potentially a recommendation between alternatives two and three. And the reason why is that we believe it meets the community desire for that type of growth. It also establishes more opportunities for mixed use, mixed income housing, as well as is employment. And then it also supports growth in the regional centers. And that is a unique element of Puyallup, for a city of your size to have two regional centers. It's rather unique to have two of those, and so how do you support the growth that's desired within those areas? While also acknowledging, you know, kind of what Puyallup is as, you know, as a as a town where people want to be and have that small, small town environment. So it's a, it's a combination of many of those different elements. So again, so considerations as we, as I step through these slides and as you review them. From your perspective, does the future land use map, you know, meet that community vision, the one that we've been talking about for, you know, the past year or so? Do you think it provides a balanced approach to growth? And then are there specific elements you would change, and if so, specific in which of those elements are? Again, we are getting to the point where we need to, you know, refine this, complete our analysis so that we can, we can finalize the draft comprehensive. And so with this, the culmination of the meeting this evening, we're hoping that the input that we receive this tonight will help us refine that and get to that draft future land use map. All right, so let's, let's get into the into the meat of it. This is the proposed draft future land use map that we've been developing internally that will step through each of the major elements. You'll see three different colors on the map, you'll see parcels or areas outlined in black. Those are changes needed to meet development targets, and we've looked at both that buildable lands inventory that we showed earlier on in this presentation as well as connections to other emerging and developing areas. There are areas outlined in purple, those are locations that are essentially map cleanups that are suggested by city staff. And Kendall will step through those elements and talk about that. And then there are also map amendments requested by property, and those are outlined in green. And so as a part of this process, cities will ask the community if there are changes that they request for their property or properties they represent to be a part of this this amendment process. So we'll step through all these elements. But I just want to show you for that map, you can see that most of those areas are really concentrated near regional centers, near corridors, and some small areas where we're recommending with smaller scale community commercial. The majority of the map stays the same, looks basically like it does today. All right, there's a couple of other elements as a part of this. City staff, you have, you have a lot of future land use classifications, and you have any, have even more zoning designations. Part of this process is to also reevaluate what your future land use classifications are. And so I just want to say a few ones that we're proposing to change or rename or combine. And so I'll just step through these briefly, we won't focus too much on these, it's mostly about the map changes, but there are some future land use classification recommendations. And the one is auto oriented to commercial to rename as general commercial. That generally aligns more with a general commercial type as opposed to focusing specifically just on on vehicles. It still allows both uses, but it takes out that auto oriented component. Limited commercial would be renamed as neighborhood commercial, that aligns more with the neighborhoods serving commercial uses that we're proposing. But it also allows for more small scale development. So starts to, you know, focus really on what the look and feel of it is with the name of the designation. And then combining business, industrial park and light manufacturing, those are elements that we're recommending just to consider as a mixed use or makes you be a mixed employment designation. All of those are very similar, they kind of do the same things, it's just, you know, be able to merge those to have fewer colors on the map. All right, so let's get into some of the changes, and again, I'll be focusing on the black outlines, Kendall will talk about the the purple and green as we get into some of these pieces. These maps are also in your packet, so you can, you can scan through and see those. But the first one are the neighborhood commercial nodes. There are a couple of areas that, one, as we were starting to look at the future land use map, you have a lot of nonconforming uses within your city, and so that was the first thing we looked at, is there a way to actually make existing uses conforming? And then so we looked at what the existing use was, what the adjacency was, whether it was vacant or undeveloped, kind of the general location within those areas. So there are some low density residential areas, and this is primarily along Stewart and Pioneer there that would be reclassified as non, excuse me, as neighborhood commercial. And you can see that primarily, if I have a pointer, you can see that primarily in that that large rectangle, kind of in the middle of your screen. You can also see some along Stewart. And we really looked at those existing uses and said, that's kind of what they're already doing, and they're adjacent to some vacant land. So those, for example, many of those are actually already nonconforming, we would make them conforming with this future land use classification. So those are some areas that we would look at potentially changing to neighborhood commercial. It would permit the expansion or redevelopment over time, and as a nonconforming use, that's not allowed. But that would also allow more smaller scale mixed use nodes. And so looking at residential areas, higher traffic corridors, areas that the community told us they want to see those services. Those are the locations that we we added some of that neighborhood commercial. Any questions on that slide?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Johnson, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm intrigued by the neighborhood commercial, and I think I made comments on this last time. And there's something kind of organic about it, especially when it's really small micro neighborhood businesses, and you look back at early American history and you'd see corner stores, you know, different little spots throughout the neighborhood, you had even little churches and spots. And so I'm not saying that we necessarily embrace that full deal, but I I'm a little bit. If this is a pilot project that we're simply opening up some neighborhood commercial, that's fine, but it seems rather limited to basically busy roads and and not truly neighborhoods. I don't know if they consider busy roads neighborhoods, it can be, I suppose, but I would like to see some perhaps models or implementation of review some broader zoning for neighborhood commercial that would actually be in neighborhoods that fit the right criteria criteria without upsetting or overturning the apple cart per se. So an example would be, and again, I'm using one is what Cockerels or whatever has the cider place there, they got this nice little farm, they converted this little tap house and it kind of created this kind of farm vibe, you know, in the neighborhood. But it'd be nice to see if we could expand that within reason without disrupting neighborhoods, but actually add some charm and walkability where neighbors would get down and walk and maybe go have a whatever it was, right? So anyway, I'm exploring that, but it does seem fairly limited if I can see basically on busy streets anyway, so.
And there's a few other locations around the city that we've identified, these are the this the primary locations. Excellent points in that, I think the the goal with neighborhood commercial, there's a balance between the energy around a small commercial node to support that and the visibility needed to be on a on a street. So is there, is there example that small neighborhood store that could work? Certainly particularly, particularly if it's already operated there for 50 years, it's just the zoning or future land use class doesn't fit that. So we've tried to acknowledge that, but also looking at the spaces that you're suggesting of, you know, what are some other areas that might create that organic kind of community feel?
Yeah, if it's done right, it could be really neat, I mean, even even look at, and it's a totally different genre, but look at, look how the, what do you call it? Airbnb has taken small businesses in people's homes and they have a little income, and there's been, for the most part, pretty minimal impact. I mean, you have some extreme ones, but for the most part, they've been operating a little small business through the Airbnb. And I could even picture, you know, maybe a little sandwich, you know, cafe or something that would be very limited that, you know, the mom or dad might want to run as kind of a stay at home person, and so it's not like they need a whole lot of staffing, but they may want to open it up to the area. So there could be some very limited, but opportunities to encourage that small business, you know, opportunity within in the culture of a neighborhood. So I know there's a little bit of, you know, some folks are so overly protective of the residential areas, they would just, you know, they the extreme, the sky is falling. But I I think that we can take precedence, look back in in yesterday here and realize that there are some appropriate places, we're not talking about a Starbucks, we're not talking about, you know, a drugstore, we're talking about some small business opportunities in some residential areas. So I'd love to see, I personally like to follow up maybe Katie with you and others to find out a little more about that. So if something is interesting, I might be able to consider championing that a little bit, so I'd like to get more information on that, thank you.
Proceed, I I disagree, but proceed.
Okay.
I I figured so, but that's okay.
All right, a couple of other areas where I'd identifying mixed use centers and corridors. There was, I mean, a universal appeal for Sean Pioneer to have, you know, it's already developing quickly. But to look at that area not just as auto oriented commercial, that's typically your big box retail and others, but to be able to add areas that could be mixed use commercial, so that's a mix of residential and commercial uses. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, all apartments are all big box, it could be within a single building, could also be horizontal mixed use, which means you have apartments with commercial adjacent. So providing a little more flexibility within those areas, but also acknowledging that that's a high growth area. And it was also from a community standpoint, an area with a lot of excitement. And that that really wanted to see more than just, you know, just the Safeway or something like that. This is also consistent with the city vision for this area for the most part. And so, again, part of this process is acknowledging what that vision is and how we put that on the map to to codify it. Any questions on that? All right, a couple of the other areas. Sa- South Meridian, this was also a location that received a lot of community interest about what this means, what it looks like. This area is already designated primarily for high density residential along the corridor. You can see that's kind of salmon color in that area, that's all high density residential. There are other areas that there's a number of vacant or underutilized parcels adjacent, also acknowledging what is proposed within the hospital district. You know, we're really considering that a district, it's not just the hospital, it's also supporting services and businesses adjacent. Is looking at that as more of a mixed use area near multi care or near the Good Samaritan Hospital. And the reason why is that we've heard loud and clear that people want to be near jobs, they want to live near their jobs. But also from a retail office or business component, the large growth of the hospital also supports growth, you know, to those secondary areas. And so that's how we were starting to think about that, take advantage of that growth. But also acknowledge that, you know, there's doctors, nurses, you know, admins that want to live nearby their their space they work. And so starting to think about that as a part of that future land use map. So adding some mixed use commercial within that area, but also increasing mixed use along South Meridian. So, you know, recognizing that it's already a residential area, but also trying to put in some more services and small scale retail within that to support those areas. So, you know, again, strategic changes within these locations, but for the most part, generally maintaining the existing land use along that area. The other piece I wanted to point out is that Meridian is also slated as a potential future bus rapid transit corridor. And one of the things that they, you know, Pierce Transit, FCA that funds transit, they look at is they look at adjacent land uses to stations. So what does that mean in terms of density for people who ride the bus, who take transit? Aligning your land use, you know, functions much better in terms of getting grants and getting that high capacity transit on the ground. So acknowledging that with those future classes. All right. Getting to the regional growth centers, no major land use changes are proposed within these areas. We are looking at, you know, some strategic changes primarily in within downtown. Looking that there are some boundary areas that are low density residential now, bumping those up to medium density residential to promote a wider range of housing. You know, that is your urban area for Puyallup, so making sure that, you know, we can acknowledge and and develop those that area as such to support those existing businesses. But then also within South Hill is looking at that limited commercial, potentially to redesignate to mixed use commercial. So that allows a few more types of uses in there, allows more flexibility in the types of development that occur. But also again, acknowledges that vision, that's that's, that's been part of the South Hill neighborhood for about the past 10 years or so, I believe. So just making some things consistent, making sure that there's some flexibility in those areas. All right, just a couple of other slides and I'll turn it over to Kendall. Some other areas, one thing we did, and I spoke about this, you know, briefly on a previous slide, is there are a lot of nonconforming uses, particularly in your residential areas. And that's really a product of just evolving zoning and and city over time. Those are old structures, probably that predate zoning even potentially. So we've looked at, you know, where there's, again, existing commercial development within single family neighborhoods, changing those designations so that they're conforming and that allows them to be more flexible with their properties. But also looking at, you know, on the west side, are there areas that could potentially transition so or transition zones? So near downtowns between low density areas and downtown, aligning the future land use classes in those those areas. And then finally, kind of south, south of East Pioneer, looking at, you know, future moderate or high density residential. That's, that's an area that is already developing, we know we still need to meet those housing targets, it feels like a good place to do that. And so that is an area that, and we looked at from what does the buildable lands inventory say, and what should we consider for that future land use map? So again, strategic changes, not, not in most of the city, but strategic changes along these corridors. Okay, now continuing its residential, near SR five 12, and these are maps four and five and six in your in your packet. These areas get to, you know, looking at from a low density residential to potentially go into medium density residential. That looks at adjacencies in terms of what's there now, whether that's commercial or employment. If there's vacant land, what is that, how does that compare to adjacent neighborhoods? So thinking that those are still detached residential areas, but that allows a little bit more diversity of housing types within these vacant or undeveloped or underdeveloped locations. And then finally, I believe this is, I made up one more slide after this, the one that was interesting to us from a public input standpoint was in the southwest corner of Puyallup in Fruitland, that area there. We had so many people place dots for community commercial. And, you know, it was surprising to us because, to be honest, it's kind of on the outskirts, it's far away, but when we talked to folks what that meant, they were saying, I have to drive so far for these places, it's underdeveloped, there's these elements here that we think, you know, really would support a small commercial or small mixed use node. And so when we think about that, you know, we're we're recommending reclassifying that to a medium density residential. That allows a little bit more density that could support small corner commercial. You have traffic on those intersections, so there's some visibility for the commercial spaces. But it's one that, you know, that is a direct, you know, output of of the community input that we heard from that. Yeah, interesting, that one in particular. All right, so with that, I'll turn it over to Kendall unless there's any questions for those those maps.
Thank you.
All right, so this next
All right. So this next one, we're going to talk about the city initiated changes. And we did um cover these and many of the privately initiated changes at your July ninth study session, but we've kind of refined some and looked at them a little bit further. So we wanted to cover those tonight. Um, the first is public facilities. So we mentioned this at that study session that we are proposing to go away from um having a public facilities land use designation, but still retaining a public facilities zoning designation. We see this as kind of being um a streamlining um option for properties that are owned by a public entity. Um, you don't have to go through a full comprehensive plan, map amendment change to change the zoning. So an example, um, one of the um examples I'll cover here um in a minute is a parcel owned by Wash Dot. And they no longer need the parcel. It's been designated as public facilities on our land use map as well as zoning. But they're trying to sell it. And so they're running into a problem with selling the property. So what we would propose is to have the um future land use map recognize the surrounding area uses. So for that one in particular, um is this parcel here? Um, it's, we are pro- proposing a slightly higher density than the surrounding neighborhood because it is along the freeway on ramp and it might be an opportunity for some more growth in that area. Um, but in the scenario that it just had public facilities zoning, it would go through a more simpler map change process, which would still have a public hearing with the city's um hearing examiner, and there would be specific findings that would need to be made in order to change the zoning. So we see that as a streamlining opportunity. Um, so that is why it's being proposed. So with that, um.
Councilmember Dor, please.
Thank you. So Kendall, does that mean that you just said hearing examiner? And there's a couple of things that I'm not excited about that have gone to the hearing examiner. So typically with a change like that, it comes to council. So you, if we do this, then it, you're taking that out of the hands of council?
So the hearing examiner holds the public hearing and makes that decision. And then it does come to council for um codif- codifying it in an ordinance.
But that, but we don't have an up or down on the hearings examiner's decision, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So with that proposal, what you'll see on the map is all the existing properties that have the public facilities land use designation. We're proposing a new designation um with the intent of eliminating that future land use designation. So we looked at um nearby properties and kind of what seemed to make sense. And so that's what you'll see for those PF, kind of the blue um colored parcels on the different maps in your packet. Um, and then we have a proposed um different land use designation for those. Um, the next one is going to be the Todd Road area. So this is um this map on the top of the slide. Um, we have slightly expanded this one from when we last brought it to you. Um, there were some properties that, um, well, this area in general was under a concomitant agreement and three of those parcels were recently purchased with the understanding that they could continue uses in that concomitant agreement. However, we recently received new legal interpretation that that agreement no longer is valid. And so we're trying to work with those property owners to find a resolution. And so we are proposing that this portion here convert to um a, the mixed employment designation that Alex touched on earlier, which is more of that um limited manufacturing designation. So two of those parcels are already developed as warehouses that were developed underneath that concomitant agreement. And so that would just kind of carry through for these parcels um on that north end. The next one is the Wash Dot parcel, and I apologize, there's a slight error on this slide. This um description of changing to general commercial is really for this other parcel that's a low density residential designated currently. Um, this is one that kind of came up at the last study session with council. It's owned by um Fruitland Mutual Water. And um in general, we just thought it didn't make sense to retain it as low density residential with what's going on around it. Um, so we're proposing to convert that one to general commercial, but the Wash Dot owned parcel is over here um just north of the on ramp um to five twelve off of Ninth Street. And we are proposing to convert that to moderate density residential. And we have met with Wash Dot staff on that, and they are supportive of that change. This next slide um is where we're kind of dive into more of the privately initiated changes. Um, we received several requests from private property owners, um the school district as well as the fair. And we previewed those with council at that study session. Um, so just further refining those, um the first one being Shaw Pioneer. Um, we're really looking at these parcels that are outlined in green, just north of East Pioneer. Um, the request was to convert them from the rural buffer residential to auto oriented commercial. Um, as Alex uh presented on a previous slide, we are proposing to convert this area to MUC, the mixed use commercial. So staff is um recommending that instead of AOC, that those parcels be converted to MUC for consistency. And we did speak with the property owner's representative and they sound um amenable to this change. So the next one is East Pioneer. Um, it's this area down here, just south of where I was just describing a map change. Um, so the properties that are outlined in green are the ones that we received a property owner request to convert them from low density residential to high density residential to support some redevelopment for those properties. And so in looking at that request, staff is then also requ- um recommending that that be expanded to the parcels that are shown here um in that black outline. So high density residential there in between the AOC and I believe this is a moderate density to the east or the west, I apologize. The next area is the Washington State Fair. Um, we received um some several maps, some cleanup, some um requests from the fair.
Excuse me. House member Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mary. I just wanted to just, just a half a skip back on the, I, the Wash Dot property. Uh, refresh my memory, how many acres approximately is that? Um, and then uh short of that, when you, when you said they were amiable to it, uh, they have no use for it at that point. Would, once the zoning changes, if it took place, would they offer that for sale so it could be used for more public good? Because they wouldn't have any reason to hang on to that anymore. Is that correct?
Their intent is to sell the property.
Okay.
And I apologize, I don't have the acreage committed to memory.
That's okay. Just wanted to get background. Thank you.
Um, so the Washington State Fair submitted several requests, some apply to the future land use map and others to the zoning map. So what we've included here are the ones that affect the future land use map only. Those zoning uh requests will be considered um following the periodic update when we amend the zoning map. So um, the areas outlined in green here are showing those parcels that are owned by the fair that they'd like to be converted to the fair land use designation. Um, there's also some here um to the north of the fairgrounds. And they did also identify a handful of parcels here that have the fair land use designation, but they're actually privately owned, not owned by the fair. So those would convert back to the low density residential. Um, the next one is Wildwood Park North. Um, it's uh about a ten acre parcel north of the the park. It's um currently low density residential and the property owner requested moderate density residential. Um, the parcel does have um critical areas along the east side that will impact the developable area of the site. So I think that's part of the request for a higher density. Um, and then staff is supportive of that change as we kind of looked at this general area and we're recommending a moderate density residential. Um, the last map specific one is the South Hill Business and Technology Center. So off of Thirty Ninth Avenue Southeast in our South Hill Regional Growth Center. Um, we are proposing to convert the southern half of the parcel to mixed use commercial based on a comment that we received from the landowner in the draft environmental impact statement process. They were requesting more broad range of uses so that they can accommodate um the changing market and also support the city's um efforts for growth in the regional growth center. Um, so that is where that change has been proposed. We're recommending that the northern portion stay. Um, it would be mixed employment for that kind of more um manufacturing type designation because of existing development that's in that area. Um, and so that's kind of the general um proposal there for the South Hill Business and Technology Center. And then just a note that the Pualup School District did request um several map changes that um with the change that staff is proposing with the public facilities, um land use designation, those wouldn't show up on the land use map with staff's proposal, but we would address those map changes with the zoning map updates following the periodic update. So at this point, I will pass it back to Alex and we can help answer any questions as well.
Right, thank you, Kendall. So, see, we just bringing the questions back we had earlier on in the presentation. We stepped through kind of the major elements of a draft future land use map. Excuse me. And, you know, bring these questions back to you for for discussion. You know, for what we presented, does that, that, you know, does that provide a balanced approach to growth? Are there specific elements that you would want to change or alter as a part of that? But then also, you know, as we think about what that draft future land use map is, you know, direction from council on, you know, what that looks like. So again, we can complete our analysis and and complete the draft comprehensive plan. That's kind of, again, the process and the point we're at in the project now. And so this is the direction we're asking for this evening. So that's the end of our presentation for this component. We do have a middle housing question after this. But we thought it'd be good to talk about the future land use map first with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I'll just kind of open it up by saying it's very difficult to say that from your presentation, whether um I think it achieves the community vision. The reason for that is your terms like moderate density and low density do not exist under the future comprehensive plan. By that, you say moderate density or low, it just doesn't exist. The House Bill one, 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 zero that you're going to talk about here next time mandates. Mandates that we allow set the six units on a single lot in a residential area. So single family areas, think about this, that mandate from House Bill one, 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 zero requires every lot in every city to be divided in two. And then there's also requires from a separate piece of legislation that up to two ADUs, correct? Be on each one of those lots. So people will see up to six homes where they see one right now. That means if you have a home that is where two people there with each have a car, you're going to have twelve cars now. Conceivably, you could have that. Um, so that's what's coming down the pike. So for you to use terms like moderate and low density is really a misnomer to the public in the context of the middle housing, which you're going to talk about next. Um, and again, which is the biggest affront to all of this is it only applies predominantly to the older neighborhoods. Anyone who has an HOA, a development with some type of an HOA, which many on the hills do, they're all exempt from that. So the burden of all of this increased housing falls on the older valley neighborhoods. And in essence, it's a remedy for turning all of our neighborhoods into rental properties. That's what is going to happen. Is every time a house comes available in the Pualup Valley, it's already true that investment bankers are buying pretty much every house that comes available in my particular neighborhood where we have a lot of rentals. But this will push it way over the edge because now they can divide every single lot and the public needs to hear this. Um, the public needs to understand that this is going to hit our community like a comet and they're going to be angry when they see six plexes go right next to their single family home. And they know that if they lived in one of the developments that has an HOA that had that kind of a covenant, they would be exempt. The particular legislation in Olympia, I noticed the, the uh, the lobby has just exited the room. But anyway, um, the the legislation in Olympia actually gave HOAs three months to put even more restrictions to make sure they would not adhere to any of these requirements. So, you know, again, I don't mind your zoning maps. They look fine, but within the context of the next presentation on middle housing, it all goes away because there is no such thing as low density anymore. All lots divided in half, all with ADUs. In fact, the requirements are that uh two units per lot, that's the lot division, four units within a quarter mile of a major transit spot, four units anywhere, that's anywhere on any lot. So I guess if we divide the lots, that would mean now we have eight units. Am I correct?
Well, actually, uh, no, you're not correct.
Okay.
The, the middle, middle housing requirements, one, do not require that scale of residential development to occur within a single family area designation. It allows it, but it does not require.
Certainly, but if an investment banker buys it, what are they going to do with it other than maximize the profit that they get from it? And they're going to turn it. I mean, I already talked to real estate agents who tell me that that is exactly what the real estate agents and investment makers are waiting for this to pass to do. So I think it's naive to think that that uh they're not going to turn it into a process where they maximize what they can get out of it, especially when cities like Pualup, they can turn them into rentals and they'll rent them. Uh, you know, in essence, it destroys single family neighborhoods. And I think people need to know the legislature outlawed. They said we could have no more single family designated neighborhoods. Unless you were in a previous HOA, that what can remain, those developments can remain single family residents. It really is a classes issue, you know? Upper income people, Seattle Times has written about this, and the equal protection clause in our state constitution should be one that cities bring up and they argue, and I believe there's a chance of them being successful. You've created two different classifications, those of us who live on the outside and those who live in inside HOAs, and they get privileges that we do not. So there's my two cents worth regarding that. And, and I I would ask this. Um, you know, I I know you're going to go into uh House Bill one, 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 zero. I assume that in your zoning, you've taken into account all of the exemptions dealing with things like um watersheds, dealing with things like flood zones, et cetera, in any of the implementation of that that bill. Am I correct?
Yeah, well, so let me, let me step back just, just a moment. So when we looked at the buildable lands inventory that Pierce County did, and we we refined, that was that slide early on in our presentation. Critical areas, which are steep slopes, wetlands, you know, other sensitive areas, those are already removed from the model. So those, those areas, you know, we don't assume growth within, within those areas. From a future land use classification, again, with single family or low density. From a future land use classification, again, with single family or low density residential and with zoning. Even though you're required by state law to allow middle, middle housing within those areas. That doesn't mean that you still don't have to apply your critical areas ordinance, you still have setbacks, you still have parking requirements. You still have all of these things that still regulate to a degree what can occur on the parcel.
There are no parking requirements within a quarter mile of the transit center and whatsoever.
So in that instance, that's correct. In other parts of the community.
There's only one per unit, that's it. And that would be off street. And again, there's no other accommodations than that on a 6,000 square foot unit.
So the question you had for zoning is that there are still development site sign requirements as a part of that. Because yes, it is true that state law does require allow for ADUs. Duplex and within certain areas near transit, for example, other types of middle housing uses. Your underlining zoning still applies in terms of how you cite the area, what's on the existing site. In terms of critical areas, in terms of developability. Just because you allow two ADUs with a home, doesn't mean that that necessarily fits on a 4,000 square foot lot. So there, yes, certainly there is going to be redevelopment, that is, that, that will, that will happen.
Also, are you investigating all of the aspects of dealing with infrastructure? Whether we can actually support this, so when you make these zoning changes, are you seeing whether this new. You know, the new requirements that come forward that can, that our city with, we just voted in fact. Because we have a failing infrastructure in many of the different utilities that we provide. And we are in fact having to invest tremendous amounts of money, can we even support this? And will you take that into account when you actually give your zoning requirement, your zoning recommendations to the council?
So you're, and you might be getting a little my skis here for some of this. But your facility plans are updated on a regular basis that look at existing and projected density and development within the city. At a high level, we looked at it through the EIS process, you know, what would these alternatives potentially do in terms of capacity? Or are there capacity issues that you would have to address? Your other plans, your stormwater, water sewer plans, those are all updated on a regular basis. Both through your capital improvement projects as well as your long-term planning for utilities. So that is part of the city process and how you address growth. And that also goes for the transportation plan, which is being adopted, updated and adopted as a part of the comprehensive plan. So from a utility standpoint, yes, that's an ongoing process from a transportation plan, the projected growth. There is a mitigation strategy through a series of projects to be able to accommodate those changes in, in the transportation. And that'll be part of the, the package as a part of the future or the draft comprehensive.
So how about the provision that allows that 25% or 25% of your, of your single family. Predominantly areas are exempt from any of the requirements.
From the standpoint of capacity, that's not accounted for. What is accounted for is through the buildable lands inventory on what is considered developable or undevelopable. And so we made those assumptions based on how you would accommodate those targets. And then we made generalized assumptions for middle housing. I don't have the exact.
I would double check that there's four different criteria of which there are, there's some that is far beyond what you just mentioned. So I guess, you know, I, I've kind of told you the context of what I'm looking this through. The lens I'm looking through to see this, it's just not as clear as the terminology. And I think the public deserves to know that there is no such thing as low density residential anymore. If you adopt these or load or moderate, even really moderate, I think it goes to more higher density, maybe not high. But certainly you wouldn't call it low. So if there's no further questions, why don't you proceed to the next area? Oh, Councilmember Adler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I just have two quick questions. One is, could you please kindly remind me the definition between high density and low density?
Sure. In general terms, low density residential is generally detached residential. And as Mayor Castman mentioned, that is also there'd be accommodation for middle housing as a part of that, which is part of the new statewide requirements. So from a low density residential standpoint, we would allow detached residential units, typical what you see today. As a part of the state requirements for policy, we would also allow certain middle housing types within those areas. High density residential can be apartment buildings, it could be townhomes depending on how it's developed. It could also be horizontal mixed use where you have apartments with commercial in certain instances. But high density residential is generally multifamily or, you know, condo, those elements, so not detached structures.
Thank you for that. And then my next question, and this might be for Kendall. So in the private initiated changes. I have a question about the South Hill Business and Technology Center. And the changes that the Benaroya company had put forward. So I, my question is, I see, you know, here it's written that. They applied for an amendment in 2022. In that comp plan amendment cycle, and then they canceled their application mid review, obviously they have now come back. So at any time, has it been discussed with Benaroya? Related to their future plans as it relates to this proposed change? How other tenants in that. Center like Central Pierce and ultimately. The Puyallup Police Department, how Benaroya's future development. Predicated on the zoning changes, what that looks like. You know, it says here, they seek a wide mix of uses to support the changed market demands. And facilitate the city's goals to add housing and jobs in the South Hill Regional Growth Center. It's okay if you don't have an answer today, but that is something I'm interested in, just what that looks like. Vis a vis these emergency service offices that exist. Thank you.
Sorry, was that the full question?
What was that?
Was that the full question?
Yeah.
I felt like I cut you off there at the end, sorry about that. We have met with the ownership several times since that comprehensive plan map amendment application. And we haven't necessarily specifically spoken about those existing uses. That are there today, but with what staff is putting forth as a proposal, which we have sent to them. But we haven't received comment back from them yet on it. Those specific uses that you mentioned would be on that northern portion of the parcel. And they would be, you know, able to continue as they currently exist. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Whitting, excuse me.
Yes, I, I'd just like to weigh in a little bit on the, on the distributed model. You know, but there's a number of areas that are undeveloped or underdeveloped scattered around. And I'm, I represent third district, so I, I think quickly about. The area that 23rd and Shaw Road vicinity and, and also near Fruitland and 512. And those areas are, are prime for, for further development. And my thinking is, you know, they're, they're zoned, they're. You know, low density currently. And if, if we, if development comes in and, and puts in single family homes there. It's really hard to, to increase the density once that's happened. So, and we need the, the increased density. So, so I would just like to say that I'm in favor of, of. Changing the dens, increasing the density in those areas so that, so that we can. Get more, more housing in place and, and hopefully smaller and more affordable units. We, we. In, in my district, we've got Forest Green, which was built many moons ago. And, and the houses are small and, and compact and, and relatively affordable for, for people that are. Trying to make this step into homeownership and I'd like to see more of that. And I, I think the answer to, the way to do that is to, is to have. Higher density residential. And hopefully, you know, the middle housing kinds of models, the cottage housing and so forth. But, but we've got some, some of that in, in Bradley Lake area. That, you know, it's a really nice community, the, the, the units are, are small and close together. But people take pride in their ownership of that property and, and it's, it's good for them and I think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Before I step in, are there any, just to make sure from a future land use map standpoint, are there any other comments on, on that? We're going to get into middle housing, I think you're, we already have, so. Okay, middle housing. So we've already been discussing, you know, what this is. It is true, middle housing is required within all jurisdictions, depending on the size of the jurisdiction. Depends on the extent of middle housing required. And the staff, based on conversations with planning commission, community and others has put together a recommendation we'd like to test with you. And I'll step through that and then, then discuss. First is to allow duplexes on, on every single family lot that is required by HB or HB 1110. So acknowledging that and incorporating that into the future land use map as well as zoning. And then specifically, and Mayor, you spoke about this briefly, is also around the Sounder Station. And looking at areas where we do have higher capacity transit, allowing up to four units per lot. With an expanded buffer around the station up to a half mile. I believe it requires a quarter, but we were looking at a half mile. And then allow also townhomes as well as cottage style housing in all single family zones, subject to density restrictions. And that's still to be determined and how that works it out. But Councilor Whitting, as you said, cottage cluster housing is essentially single family homes, they're just smaller houses. You know, eight, 900 square feet, they're either on their own parcel or some of them recondoized. It depends on the structure and how that is, but those are single family units as well as townhomes which are shared wall. And then finally allowing triplexes on corner lots in all single family zones. And this is actually a very traditional way to do housing, if you see in many cities duplexes, triplexes. Those are often allowed on corner lots because of the access that that corner provides. But you know, allowing again, a little bit more diversity and flexibility in, in the types of housing that are, that would be allowed within those areas. So with that, this is not something that has to be updated through your comprehensive plan. We do need policy that addresses this, but these are essentially zoning code changes. So we would address that through the next phase, but we do need to address it from a policy standpoint within the comprehensive.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex, we're looking at some of the definitions here, maybe help me with general intent. Get the four, four bullet points, a townhome could be laid out much like a duplex or a triplex in a row. So when you say duplex and triplex on the first and last point, then townhomes in the third point. Are you referring primarily to rentals on the duplexes and triplexes or rental unit? Versus the townhomes being individual homeownership units, potential for purchase, is that, is that defined there or are they all kind of intermixed?
So duplexes, I mean, are, they're similar in townhomes that they have a shared wall, but they're often on a single parcel. So it's a single landowner with a, with a duplex, so they can choose to own and rent one side.
Right.
We've also seen cases in some cities where some of these elements are being condoized. So that you break that out and then you have multiple types of units on parcels. Townhomes are shared walled, but also often on their own parcel. And so it could be, you know, a skinny, a skinny parcel where you have, it could be 20 feet deep. Or 20 feet wide by 40 feet deep and they are, they are on their own parcel themselves, but they're still a shared. Different development type and a different.
So they would theoretically take a parcel and kind of quote quasi subdivide it. And so each person a little sliver of dirt, is that kind of how that works?
That's correct. And that's, that's a typical way that townhomes.
Okay.
We've done some analysis in areas like, you know, is it duplex or is it a townhome? And it just kind of.
Right.
Lives in the parcel.
Yeah, how I would define it, that's why I wanted to clarify, when I think of duplexes traditionally or triplexes, I think of rental units on a lot. And you rent them typically. And when I think of townhomes, I think of perhaps that same relatively concept. But they could be purchased independently, whether it be, you know, a shared lot. But still own the, the, the structure and have co-op sharing, or they chop it up and each have your own little piece of dirt. But I, I guess I want to touch on this because this HB, you know, 1110 is, is a pretty interesting mandate. Not option by the state, it's a state mandate. And we've been through some mandates here recently in the last few years, we've seen how some of those worked out. I'd like to know, you know, is, is Washington setting precedence here? Are there any other states in the nation of 50 that have done a widespread mandate of housing like this?
Yes, Washington is not the first, but you're one of a few and so.
And those others are?
Minneapolis was one of the first cities to, to allow middle housing within their single family zones.
Okay.
And they did a few other things too. Oregon did this about four years ago and that was a statewide requirement.
So I'm thinking just statewide, not just areas, statewide would be Oregon only.
Oregon is the only other one I know of. California also has some very specific requirements, but I don't know that they go to the extent that Oregon, Washington does. So what Washington is actually model off of Oregon's.
So if, if Oregon is the only state that has kind of the statewide mandate that we know of, and maybe California has some portions of it. And no other state in the union has this, it's a pretty good indication. I've looked at the data of Oregon recently and California, I don't think it's good data that we want to model them. I think, I would surprise me why other states, if they're not doing it, it's probably a reason. And I wouldn't look to Oregon as a, as a model that I want to build my business structure after or even housing structure. So I have a real concern with the precedent that the state legislature has done with a. A partisan particular group who has implemented this, that's in the majority and, and God bless their good intentions. I have, I want to get in the benefit of the doubt, but I'm not quite sure that, that there is some data that shows us of other states and 50 states. You're talking maybe one other one has implemented this and we're kind of the second one. And I'm sure Oregon is fairly new, so it's not like they have a precedence as it's been going on for 10 years. And we have some data that shows it's really working, so it's kind of like an experimental deal that we're trying with good intentions. So, you know, I, I am very concerned about this mandate from. Big Brother per se, state legislature mandated this upon every city and every jurisdiction across our town, specifically in Puyallup. Now, could we cherry pick and pull some things out of here that would perhaps provide some good things? You know, I could probably get behind point three and have some higher density townhomes if there was some guarantee it was homeownership. I would do it, but the other ones, I, I really, I think it's a, a social experiment with good intentions. That we won't know until after it's implemented, how great of an idea it was. And we, by that time, the bomb is already hit, effects are done and I'm not quite sure we can backpedal. So I'm coming at it with that kind of a concern, even though theoretically, we don't have an option. This time around, for mandates, I think if I were to do it again, I, I think we have options. Do we have the courage to stand up against those mandates in this case, unlike we were able to perhaps in previous years? So that's my thinking on that, just want to get that out there publicly to be known.
Okay, any further comments? Council, Councilmember Adler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to offer. That perhaps we consider at some point in the near future. Inviting our state lobbyists to come before us and perhaps. Presents at the next update on the comp plan related to House Bill 1110. You know, Alex, unless I'm completely over my skis here. I, I don't think that you do much work in the legislature or do any lobbying yourself. So I, I do think that it would be really good edification frankly for myself. If, if at some time in the near future, our state lobbyists came before us and could drill down a little bit more on this. Thank you very much. um, on this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I think my perspective. Yeah, is known. So with that, let's move on. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Okay, next item on the agenda is the one B, which is the wayfinding signage plan update. Oh, sorry, um, Eric Johnson.
Just a quick.
Councilmember Witty.
Just a quick comment, question. Uh, the, you know, on our last subject, we need to get this thing moving ahead. We need to provide clear direction on, on what we want to get done. You know, I, my sense is that, that we haven't given you clear direction yet. And we don't have very many opportunities to do this. So I don't want to miss an opportunity that, that, uh, you know, I want to push this along as far as we can tonight. Is, do, do you feel like you've got the direction you need?
Well, thank you, thank you for that. Uh, I think what we, one, we do need to move on a part of, you know, the state requirements, not just for middle housing, but also comprehensive planning is that we do need to wrap this by the end of the year.
Um, let me, let me correct you. That's not correct. I think that in fact, uh, I believe we have until July of next year. Is that correct?
The comprehensive plan is what he's talking about for the, um, for the other health folks about that with June of twenty twenty five.
That's correct. You have six months for implement, uh, middle housing changes and others and your, and others in, of your, within your zoning development code. So about the comprehensive plan itself, they're tiered and we're in the first tier and that's due, um, at the end of twenty twenty four.
Okay, right.
But tha- thank you for that, Councilor Witting. Um, my, maybe let me speak back to what I heard, uh, and you, you tell me if, if we're in the, in the right path. Um, I heard support for neighborhood commercial. I also heard significant concern for, for neighborhood commercial. Um, I didn't hear any, um, conflicts or disagreement with what's happening in the regional centers and what we're proposing. And I did hear some discussion about River Road and what that, what that would look like. Um, our intention is to maintain River Roads' plan and continue with that, um, but also look at some economic development strategies to actually get that, get that moving along. Um, so the question really, I think, came down to that neighborhood commercial component, what we do within the existing single family areas.
I, I would also say that when you discussed your middle housing, you went to a half mile. I, you're going, you're stretching outside the minimum requirements. And I, I would not in favor of stretching. I'm not in favor of the requirements. It takes the autonomy away from us to make the decisions that are best for our community. That's just completely been removed in the type of housing that we have. Not completely. I understand all those little fine points, but when it comes down to the number of units, that is a big salient feature to a, a neighborhood, and that's been taken out of our hands. So I would not suggest that you stretch those boundaries any further. And, you know, I, uh, I will do my best to, to, to see whether we even have to adhere to the basic requirements, but that's something much bigger.
Thank you. And so for related to middle housing, um, so that was for the future land use map. Those are the comments that, that, that I, I heard. From the middle housing standpoint, I heard, um, support for, you know, different types of middle housing within neighborhoods from an affordability, um, standpoint, but also the focus on ownership, homeownership as being very important for, for the council. I heard concern potentially about what this means in terms of, are we the first out of the gate to be able to do this? Um, I think the answer is no, there are only a couple of states that are requiring, but there are many cities that have been doing this for many years previous to, to middle housing requirements by the state, but still that concern, uh, for what that looks like for neighborhoods. I might heard concern from, from Mayor about the basis of middle housing and what that, you know, what that looks like and how that transpires within the city. From my perspective, I don't know that we have clarity on how we're addressing middle housing for the comprehensive plan. I do know at this point, um, that we are moving towards, um, consistency and compliance with those state requirements. And that's what we're, that's how we're moving, moving forward until you tell us not to. Um, but we're, we're trying to adhere to what Department of Commerce and others have, have said, all cities and jurisdictions have to, have to deal with in this go around. So that is what I heard, um, from a, from direction is we have a couple of things on neighborhood commercial, but the future land use map sounds generally on track. Middle housing, I think we're aligned with what the regulatory piece is telling us with concern about that overall policy just in general. Um, but potentially some current concerns about how that's applied, whether it's a quarter or a half mile, whether that's specific types within those neighborhoods. That's what I heard. Is that a fair rendition of what, with the discussion?
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to just differentiate, um, you know, you said there were some protocols of this being implemented by cities, um, and only really one state. I, I would probably guess to, to still say that's not accurate, um, a comparison, because those cities, they're probably the local um, jurisdictions and elected officials made that decision for their local system. They were still empowered to oversee the growth or lack thereof of their own city. The difference of a state is that they've taken all cities and they said, you're going to do this and assert the, the authority that the cities, I believe, have and, and the responsibility by the local voters to represent them, not the state coming in. So I, I think it's a huge difference and I, I really wouldn't want to look at data as stating it works in other cities because that was done through a local jurisdiction authorizing of that. This, this is a statewide deal, which goes against the very grain of, uh, I think the autonomy of cities and being able to be elected and have representation on how they want their city to operate. Um, and then Mayor, I want to go on the record and, and just state, you know, I, I think I kind of made it pretty publicly clear, my disdain for these things, uh, as I've made it very clear, my disdain by other state mandates at the state legislature and the, and the, you know, dominant party that has, has implemented some of these things. Again, with, I'm going to give the benefit of the doubt of good intentioned. Uh, I'm not going to, uh, insult them in any way. Good intention, but I think problematic experiments. Um, if there was a way to contest or to fight that, I, I'm not afraid of it. Uh, and if there's some ways to do that, uh, through a process that would, um, allow, um, standing up for our town, I certainly would, would support that, Mr. Mayor, in some capacity. So I'll go on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Appreciate that. With that.
I'm still here.
Oh, Councilmember Witting, you want to continue? I'm sorry, I, uh, bounced over you to Councilmember Johnson. If you'd like to speak again, please do.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your, for your summary. I, I have a better sense now of, of what direction we've given you. And, uh, I'd just like to, to, you know, say I appreciate your, your intent to, to comply and point us in the direction of, of complying with HB one, ten, eleven, ten. Uh, you know, as, as local officials, we don't like to get told what to do, but, but I'm pragmatic and, and I don't want to, I think it's a slippery slope to, to try and push back on that, on that legislation, other than by making sure our state legislators know what our opinions are on it. But, uh, I think in terms of your efforts, I think you're on the right track there. And, uh, just in terms of, uh, like my last point is in terms of neighborhood commercial. Uh, you know, done, done well, I think there, it's a, I think we can vitalize our, our communities and, and have more of a sense of, of community within the different districts around the city. And, uh, so I, I would support that. There was some discussion about putting a bistro in the old, uh, fire station building on Shaw Road. Uh, I don't think that's a good place for it personally, but the, you know, traffic be, is horrible on Shaw Road. So, but, uh, having a bistro nearby to, to run down and you know, for, for a community asset, it could be community gathering place. I think that'd be, be really cool in some of our communities. So, so just wanted to weigh in on that personally. Thank you.
Councilmember Dora.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to weigh in on the neighborhood commercial. And I too had heard that and would not have supported that. That just, I don't even know how the fire district gets out of that particular location, um, or how they have been. So I have some reservations about neighborhood, commercial, but it's going to depend on the specifics of it. Um, you know, we talked about that little neighborhood corner store. There's that one at, what is it? Eleventh and Stewart? I used to walk there as a, I'd spend the night at my friend's grandparents' house and we'd walk down there and get our penny candy. So I mean, I appreciate the, um, the community that it, you know, it can build, but I think it need the detail, the devils in the details on that one. I would really want to see that we're doing it correctly and not throwing a bistro on Shaw Road. Um, I think that you, your assessment of what you heard today is correct. And I do want to tell you that I really, you're getting a lot of emotion up here. And Councilmember Witting said, you know, who wants to be told what to do? We don't. And local control is something we always advocate for. And at this point, you know, clearly there's some tensions around that. But I recognize it's not your fault and the, or staff's fault. And I really appreciate the effort that you've put in to this, um, work. Um, and I look forward to continuing this process with you. So thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex, I just want to do the same thing too. I appreciate your professionalism and, and kind of fielding some of the, uh, you know, uh, passions on, uh, the defense of, you know, in some sense, I mean, if you're speaking of a parent, you know, you always say, don't mess with a, with a mama bear, you know, if you mess with their kids, she's going to let you know, right? And, and I think a fatherhood type thing too. So I think in some, some small sense, you have city leaders who have that protection for their town. And so it comes out. Um, and I think we've tried to maintain, you know, uh, control in our, in our, inventing our communication. But I do recognize that, um, you know, you've got a job to do and, and I appreciate your understanding that we're not targeting you personally, but we're just letting, we're kind of sounding out loud our, our kind of concerns and perhaps our, our potential plans, what we could do, if anything, in a public manner that people deserve to hear, right? And so again, thank you for that, staff as well for um, allowing us to talk about these difficult subjects. And, and I, I want to affirm what Councilmember Dora does, that we certainly don't target you, you personally or anybody else, but we just appreciate your allowing us to share our, our perspective on this. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it. We'll be back.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, okay, now Eric Johnson, please.
Okay, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Eric Johnson, Public Affairs Officer, and I'm here to provide you with an update on the wayfinding signage plan. Uh, and also joining me virtually is Dean DeShetler with MIG, who can help answer questions as well as we move along here. So agenda tonight, so, uh, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, the background of this project. It's been, uh, uh, a little bit since we provide you with an update since last April. So it's always good to get a refresher on the background of this project and also the project goals. Uh, talk about, uh, where we are in the project schedule, uh, talk about the community survey, uh, that we, uh, launched this summer and we have since closed. So talk about some of those survey results. And then, uh, we'll dive a little bit into, uh, kind of the current phase that we're in, which is the, um, uh, gateway or the streetscape enhancements, uh, that will come with some of the gateway locations. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Uh, and then of course we'll, uh, have an opportunity for, uh, feedback and questions. So just a refresher on the background. So the wayfinding signage plan was identified, uh, in the Meridian Streetscapes report, which was, uh, developed uh, back in November, uh, twenty twenty two, and it was one of the ten projects within the report. Uh, and it was one of the top requested projects by council in the community. Uh, when asked to rank the ten, uh, it was actually number two. Number one was Maker Festival Street. So knowing that this was a high priority for council in the community, uh, the city contracted with MIG, our consultant, to, uh, produce the wayfinding signage plan. And just a refresher on the project goals, these were developed as part of the Meridian Streetscape, uh, planning exercise. Um, the, the high level goals of this, uh, signage plan is to help people navigate through downtown. Uh, downtown is the, uh, the scope of this project. Uh, strengthen the connection between downtown and the fair. That was a big goal for council and the community. Uh, develop a consistent and coordinated science system that works together. Uh, explore opportunities for incorporating art features into the wayfinding science system, specifically the design concepts. Uh, and then also identify any street improvements that would need to occur to, to enhance those key entries to downtown and help people uh, uh, develop and strengthen, uh, Puyallup's unique identity. So really this project, at least this current phase of the project is developed into two phases. So phase one, which is the planning and conceptual phase. Uh, that's where we're currently wrapping up. You can see where that star is. And then phase two, which is the design development, the design development is really getting into the meat and potatoes of the actual plan itself. So drafting of the signage plan, taking what we've heard from the community and from you all in the conceptual phase and drafting that plan and bringing that before you. So right now we have just started the streetscape enhancement at, uh, Gateways Concepts, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that means, uh, in a future slide. So again, where we are, uh, so at the last update that we provided to you in April, uh, we presented, uh, the draft, uh, sign concepts, the family, if you will, of different signs. Uh, and we got some great feedback from you all, and we have incorporated your feedback into the updated design concepts, which I'll share with you in just a moment. Uh, we also did a, a community survey, uh, in the summer, uh, through Survey Monkey, and we sent that out to various different places and we will share those survey results with you in just a moment. Uh, and again, like I mentioned, we're beginning the Gateway Streetscape Enhancement Concepts. So here are the updated design concepts, really kind of the, the main feedback that we heard from you all was that you were, uh, very much in support of it. Uh, one thing that we did here, and I believe Mayor Castima, this was your suggestion, was to add more curvature to the poles. So you can see we've added some curvature here, if you can see my cursor, uh, to the vehicular directional signage. Uh, we also did that to the pedestrian directional sign types. We have two options that we'll go over with here and also in the pedestrian kiosks. And the same goes for the, um, the primary gateway. Overall, not a whole lot has changed. Um, one of the things we did do is we added some curvature here to, uh, the banners. Uh, I know that council expressed, uh, tremendous support for having banners there that we can promote the tourism branding and other public events. Uh, and also the light pictures, making sure that the, uh, the toppers were illuminated. That was a key feedback that we heard from you all. So those are the updated design concepts that we have. So we took those design concepts and we, uh, sent them out to the community through an online survey through our Survey Monkey account. Uh, was posted on social media, our website, our newsletter. Uh, we had flyers with the QR code distributed around town. Uh, we also shared it with, uh, a lot of our partners, uh, school district, the fair, PMSA, the chamber and other community partners. And we also had a, a poster displayed, uh, in the library hallway as folks came in with a QR code so they could scan and, and participate. So, uh, from that survey, we had it open for about, about a month. So total responses were just, just shy of four hundred, so three hundred and eighty one. Uh, here's just kind of a, a demographic summary. Eighty-four percent of respondents said that they are Puyallup residents. Seventy-four percent respondents were female and most of the respondents were between the ages of thirty-five and sixty-four. And also any opportunity we can to get signups for the City Z newsletter. We had a hundred and sixty-five signups. That's always a good opportunity to boost those numbers. So I'm just going to walk through some of the questions that we asked at a high level. Um, we asked respondents to rate their overall impressions of the signed family. So seventy-four percent of the respondents either loved or liked the sign designs. Uh, one of the follow-up questions that we asked was what do you like about the signs specifically? And that was an open-ended question. Some of the common responses that we heard were the colors, uh, the signs are attractive, easy to read, uh, very clear design and helpful and simple. Uh, we also asked the question, uh, about the, uh, pedestrian directionals, and we actually had, uh, two design concepts. Option three A, which is a single panel, you can see there, and then option three B, which is a multiple finger panel. Uh, and so we asked the, uh, respondents to, uh, pick either three A or three B, and over seventy-five percent of the respondents preferred three B. And so asking them, why did you pick that option? Uh, some of the common responses that we heard was that, um, option three B was easier to read and understand. It was more visually appealing and people really liked, um, the arrows and the yellow tips right there look like, uh, daffodil petals. Uh, we also asked respondents to rate their impressions on the gateway arts design. Over sixty-seven percent of respondents. Over sixty-seven percent of respondents said that they loved or liked it. And follow-up question, what did you like about it? Some of the common responses were, it was a classy design, feels very welcoming, uh, the daffodil finials or the toppers. We got a lot of good responses about that. Uh, inclusion of the banners on the side and also, uh, the red brick matching, uh, other public buildings in downtown. We, we got lots of good feedback about that. So for instance, the Pioneer Park Pavilion, the library and city hall, they liked that, that, that brick matched those other buildings. So kind of moving on to the current phase that we are in, uh, the gateway streetscape enhancements. So what I have up here is the, um, uh, draft gateway arch location.
Excuse me, Eric. Uh, I have a question. Uh, Deputy Mayor King, would you like to wait or ask a question now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I could ask now, if you want to go back one slide real quick.
Sure.
Was there any comment regarding the daffodils and the steel structure on either side of the, uh, downtown Pialop that looks like spider webs? In my opinion?
No, we didn't hear anything like that. No.
Was there any uh, design choices in regards to those areas on that upper archway?
Upper archway? So we had brought some design choices to you all at a previous meeting. And so that was, you know, council, you expressed a desire for this design concept for the primary gateway. And so that's the one that we used to vet out to the community.
Okay, carry on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So gateway streetscape enhancements, so over here on the right, you can see, um, this is kind of a, a plan view of where the primary gateway locations are proposed to be located and also the secondary gateway locations. Um, so, uh, the gateway streetscape enhancement is an opportunity to look at potential streetscape improvements, uh, for where those gateways would be located. So for instance, you know, if we were to place a primary gateway arch on South Meridian, what sort of sidewalk or roadway improvements would need to occur in order to accommodate that? Um, two primary gateway arch locations are being recommended based on feedback from our stakeholders and also the strategy report. So, um, the two primary locations, so again, the primary gateway, gateways are the arches that span across the entire, entire street. Uh, the first location is, uh, well, actually the first location on the map is North Meridian, near just south of the Fifth Avenue intersection. So just south of the Casamia Restaurant is where that, where the vicinity of that would be located. And then the second, uh, primary location would be along South Meridian, near the Blue Lot, near the fairgrounds. And then the secondary gateway locations, that would just be a single post sign. And I'll show you, uh, some examples of what those could look like. Uh, the, um, the strategy report and stakeholder group is recommending, uh, locations along West Pioneer, East Pioneer, East Main and West Stewart. And so one of the things that we'll be looking for feedback from you all tonight is before we move ahead with the gateway streetscape enhancements is making sure that those locations are, are a proper fit for, for what we want to do. So, so again, these locations, they're still in flux, they're still being hashed out. And that's one of the things that we're hoping to hear from you all this evening. So gateway streetscape enhancements, why were these locations chosen? Uh, they accommodate the majority of vehicle, uh, vehicle traffic into downtown. It also offers a welcoming experience. The downtown borders creates a natural area as you're entering the city. Uh, they also meet MUTCD guidelines. That's the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So essentially that's a rulebook for how traffic signs are to be designed. Uh, it also, uh, complies with visibility and sight distance requirements, making sure the signs are proper distance away from a light intersection so that the light intersection, the signs are not competing with each other and distracting drivers. Uh, and it also complements the streetscape infra- infrastructure parameters. So what I have over here on the left is the, uh, primary, uh, gateway design. And then over here, or sorry, on the left, is the primary gateway design. And then over on the right, we have two, uh, very preliminary designs for the secondary gateway locations. So those are those single posts that I had mentioned previously in the last slide. So we're hoping to get some feedback from you all on which of those two options you prefer the most? Or is there some sort of hybrid of those two? So next steps, uh, we'll be incorporating the survey results into the draft plan. We're going to continue working on the gateway streetscape enhancement phase. Uh, and then we'll begin working on the design development of the sign types. That's really getting to the specifications of the signed, uh, sizes and typologies. And then we'll be developing preliminary cost estimates with that. Um, as a side note, we have also submitted for an LTAC grant request for engineering design, which would be, once this phase is completed, the next phase, which would hopefully continue on next year. And then of course, we'll present the draft wayfinding plan, uh, to our stakeholder group and to you all at a future meeting. And then open it up to feedback and questions from you all.
Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if you wouldn't mind just going back to the archway one more time.
Sure.
Um.
This one or the?
That, that one's fine.
Okay.
Um. Would there be any possibility of having discussion about increasing the letter size of downtown Pialop to make it more bold and visible from a longer distance rather than? I know that there's going to be some line of sight, uh,
Right, yeah.
to, to letter size that, you know, how soon will it be until they, you know, the average person that, let's be honest, that can't read signs on the road will be able to see it, you know, well, is it going to be ten yards away? Is it going to be fifty yards away? You know, um, can we increase that font size to, uh, just make it a little more pronounced rather than, oh, there it was, and there it went? Just my two cents.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point. And one of the things I want to clarify, too, is that our plan is to, um, uh, illuminate that section, so downtown Pialop, and also you can see that yellow bar underneath, uh, provides some sort of illumination there. Uh, because as we all know, we're in the Northwest and it gets dark a lot, uh, in the winter months. So making sure that people can see those, uh, at four o'clock at night in December when it's, when it's dark out, so.
Will the, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, will the individual letters be lit up or?
Yes.
Uh, and then is the yellow kind of like a neon idea?
I, I would need to get some clarification from our consultant, but from what I understand, it would have a glowing.
Or a backlit feel on the yellow.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, if we could get the, the lettering to increase in size, just that way it's a little more pronounced before you arrive to it. That would be my suggestion from there. I do like the brick. I think it ties in well with our downtown and historical side of things and the daffodils on top are a nice touch as well. Um, but yeah, that'd be my only concern with the font size of the letters. Just making sure that one could read it, uh, well ahead of time prior to actually getting to the sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Door.
Thank you. Um, Eric, I really like this and I obviously am in the demographic that responded. I like the spider web daffodils. I think that was one of the things that initially, I just like.
That was a poor choice of words. I'm sorry.
I know, but I'm like, seriously, that's the one thing from the very beginning of this, when you had that, I really liked that touch. It's elegant, but historic, you know, ties everything. And so I really do like that. Um, I appreciate Councilmember King, Deputy Mayor King's comments about the font, but I also wouldn't want it to be garish. Or I mean, we have an elegant historical sign, so I don't want to have something huge there. Um, but I do, yeah, whatever that, and so far he hasn't steered us wrong, so I would like to see what that looks like. Um, and you, I don't know if you're asking, but I like this, the downtown Pialop on the right. I like the way it ties in, um, as opposed to the yellow.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. It's great, great job.
Councilmember Johnson, sorry, I didn't see you there.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll add some support on the archway. Um, I do like the, uh, the articulate cutout design on the, uh, daffodils. I think it's great. Nice detailed finish work. Um, I, I do, I would agree with Deputy Mayor to, um, enlarge the, the font, the font on the downtown Pialop. So it's, you know, perhaps even as double in size. Um, and I would fully support individual backlit, uh, bulbs for each letter is lit up independently and not some kind of exterior lighting that would get lost. And then I would, I kind of like the idea of a possible illuminated LED or something that with the yellow underneath, like a highlighter would look kind of cool to kind of pronounce that.
Kind of a soft glow effect.
Yeah, yeah. And then between the two signs, I like the one with the predominant yellow, um, that makes the, it stand out a little nicer. The one, I could drive right by the other one, not notice it. So I do like that.
So to clarify the one on the left.
Number six, or yeah, secondary, yeah, the, the middle one, I guess, between the archway and the other side. Yeah. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gilliam.
Thank you, Mayor Castama. Um, since we're weighing in on the secondary gateway signs, I do like, uh, similar to Councilmember Door, the one on the far right. Um, but if I could make any suggestion, um, I am in full room with Councilmember Johnson and that it needs a lot more yellow. So if we could just make it a bigger yellow background, but I like that welcome to arch on the top there. Um, um, I guess I'm, I, I, as much as I enjoy daffodils, I'm not enjoying it on that sign. That symbol on top there. So that's why I prefer the one on the right, but just a little bit more yellow.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I was curious to hear your thoughts on the topper, how it would translate on that.
Yeah, not a fan of the topper on that particular sign, but, um, more yellow to help the downtown pop a little bit more. Yeah, thank you. Hey, great work, by the way. This is awesome. Yeah, good job. Thanks.
Councilmember Adler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Eric. Um, good work. I like what is presented here. I, um, am with my colleague, Councilmember Johnson. I like the middle option with the yellow. Um, I could go with or without the topper. Um, but I do think that the yellow, um, or the increased use of yellow on this particular, um, image is, I like that it pops, right? Um, so I think that that's why I was drawn to it. Um, the only thing that I would like to add, and I recognize that when I am about to ask, um, is somewhat, um, contradictory to what we're trying to do here. But, um, if you go back to your slide where, um, you're showing where likely the wayfinding signs will be placed. Um, and this is the contradictory part is if, if we can be more thoughtful or think outside the box, if there are ways to increase the number of signs that does not um, confuse individuals or looks too much, if you will. Um, I would be interested in seeing how we can really, um, capitalize upon this opportunity in a way that still meets the intent of the wayfinding signs, um, but also, um, shows it off a little bit more with perhaps an increased number of signs. Um, I'm excited about this. I'm grateful for the, for the good work. I am grateful, um, that you have listened to what we have said, either directly or in between the lines, if you will. Um, and I would like to see this, uh, come to fruition as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Whitting.
I just had a couple of quick ones, but back on the location sign, I, I was looking at the, at the, uh, number five there and, and I, I think a lot of traffic comes down West Stewart and turns south on, on Fifth, so I would suggest we move that to the west side of Fifth as opposed to the east side. Uh, I know there's some development there, which may make it a little bit hard to find a spot for that, but, but that was my, my thought on that. And in terms of the, of the three, of the two alternatives, I like the yellow too, so, so just for what that's worth, thank you.
Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if you wouldn't mind going back to that slide showing all three signs. Could you maybe explain and elaborate a little bit? And I don't know if you have this information up right now, but, uh, on option, I guess the one with the yellow, I'll just say that. Yep. Uh, how is that going to be lit up? Do you know?
So currently it's not being proposed as being illuminated, just because, you know, it's a single post and also we need to look at, you know, access to conduit and how close it's going to be to street lights. So currently it's not being proposed for illumination. That doesn't mean that we can't propose it or consider that. So could be, could be included as a potential option.
Okay. Um, I, I do like that option for that particular sign. Um, I would just like to be, uh, and I think the council may as well, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, I'm just assuming, um, as far as the lighted option, if there is one, I think, uh, just to make sure that we have some input on that as well. I would appreciate that.
And just to clarify, if, if, if this ends up being the, the option that moves forward, um, would you like us to look into for this option as well, the other one, if that one ends up going for, I'm just looking for clarity?
Option as far as what I'm sorry.
Uh, for electrification. So if this were the option that, that moves forward, would you like us to look into that as far as like illumination?
I think it would look nice.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and then if you wouldn't mind, uh, going back to the wayfinding signage samples there. So, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, you know, going back and looking at some of the other, uh, signage that's currently out there. Um, one of the things that I have always heard and I'm going to defer, um, to my colleagues here and then see what they have to say, but the signage that's out there seems a bit small and hidden.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we just have to make sure that these are large enough.
Yes.
I mean, I know that this is conceptual, um, and it may or may not be to scale, but it seems a bit small.
Yeah, and, and again, you're correct with that. This is not to scale. So once we get into kind of the real design development and get into fabrication, that's when we're going to make sure that these are actually readable. I completely understand, you know, one of the things with the, the current signs is that, um, they were designed to be read at uh, pedestrian level, but they were placed at vehicular height, if that makes sense. Right. You have to look up really high and the font's really tiny.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
That won't happen here.
And will council be able to have, um, final approval on size and everything when it comes back?
Yeah, yeah, when this comes back, yeah, for the final plan, uh, you'll get an opportunity to weigh in as, as is future phases as well.
Perfect. Thank you. That's it. Great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to that, um, I'll just, again, tag team here. Um, I, I would really like to see illumination on the, on this, on the, uh, single post signs as, uh, being appropriate. Um, again, I think, I just think it stands out more. Um, it would even kind of cool, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, right? Again, I'm not trying to get the minutia, but some kind of illumination on the, the lettering as well as maybe even the yellow area that was kind of lit up as kind of a glowing yellow that with the white, uh, print on there possibly. I might even like to go ahead and just, you know, um, you know, kind of dream big and, and vision big, even though I may get some pushback because money, money, budget, but I'm proud of our town. Um, and I love the archways. I, I would love to see archways in all of the entrances of the north, south, east, east and west. Um, I, I just throw it out there. I, I know that people, you know, appear in the back of their heads going to get up. I do obviously think coming up down Meridian, that's, that's the main central corridor, so I can see that. Um, and I'm okay with the individual signs on the other entrances, but um, there's something pretty special about entering into the gate of the city, the city gate, when you think about it. And, uh, we could have, um, north, southeast and west gates. So that's a thought on that. Um, and then going back to, um, those, uh, signs, I don't know, I want to kind of weigh in on three B, I think, on there with the yellow arrow tips on the edge. That's kind of catches your eye, you see the little arrow. I really like that. So I don't know if you're looking for feedback on that, or maybe I missed that, but I want to at least chime in on that.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, Eric, do you have the feedback you need?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, I would, uh, I would, uh, uh, second Councilmember Johnson's view of a, not only a north, south, but east, west. But again, I know there's a cost associated with that. So with that, thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Okay, now let's move on to one C, downtown parking implementation update. Dan Vessel. Dan Vessels, please.
Good evening, Mayor Castama, councilmembers. Uh, just following up on prior meeting that we had uh, about a week ago, I believe it was, where we talked about uh, Daniel with Fay and Pierce was here. We provided an updated uh, parking study regarding the downtown parking implementation and time zones. And at that meeting, council requested some additional information and updated numbers uh, prior to reviewing the proposed map. And so I'm just back to provide that information to council and gather your feedback on the proposed map. Uh, so the first uh, slide that you have here is the updated parking inventory that includes that council's request, uh, the sounder parking garage. Uh, so these are just updated numbers showing total on-street parking, off-street parking. And then what Fay and Pierce did is they also delineated that um, to include specific sounder parking. That's thousand forty-four that you see there for a total parking inventory. And then they've also broken out parking inventory during the market Saturdays. There are, just as a note, ninety-one spaces that they count that are closed. That's typically allowing for vendors and um, other reserve spaces during the farmer's market. What that looks like here on slide two, these are updated numbers regarding weekday averages, on-street parking, off-street parking, total average. No major changes were presented here. Uh, the percentages were fairly similar to what they were before. However, once we look at the weekend averages, when we factored in the sounder garage, there were significant changes in these figures. Um, of note, the ones that I will point out are the total averages for market Saturdays. Now you'll see the nine to eleven AM column is fifty-two percent. Previously, that was at seventy-six percent. Eleven AM to one PM is fifty-seven. That was at eighty-eight percent. And uh, one PM to three PM is again at fifty-seven. That before was at eighty-nine percent. So as council requested that we include the parking garage, this inventory represents a dramatic decrease in that percentage. So overall, uh, we are looking at during the markets or off-street parking and the total average, well under the sixty percent figure. On-street parking um, stayed predominantly the same.
Councilmember Whitting.
Ju- just to clarify, you're talking the actual garage and not the the surface level parking by the station?
This includes all sound transit parking, garage and surface loss.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. And the next slide, I know this one's a little difficult to see, so I will try to zoom in. Uh, councilmember, I believe it was Doorhead asked before council looked at the time zone map to get an understanding of what is the pre-pilot time zone. So what we have here is this map, and this is pre-pilot. If I can do this here, there we go. Time zone. So here we have multiple different colors and it doesn't reflect very well on my monitor, but I can see on the TV monitors, it's a little bit better. There are actually two separate shades of green along Meridian. There's a light green uh, to typically along Meridian here. Then we have a darker shade here. The lighter green represents two hours. The darker green represents three hours. The dark purple is four-hour time zone parking. And as we move near the high school, we have this light pink or fuchsia shade that is eight-hour parking. Uh, near the high school, we also have an additional area here, which is one-hour parking. That's what we have in orange. There's also orange parking over here by the activity center representing one hour. We have some red, which are fifteen-minute spaces. We do have this section of blue, which is uh, parking reserved for place only. And then that continues down with the dark purple. So this is the map that was in place prior to our downtown pilot study. Uh, beginning in January, uh, following a presentation to council, we modified this map and made changes to this to determine if there was a need for this parking. And here we have, let's see, there we go. This is the pilot program. So what we did to sort of show some of the differences is we changed some of those colors. So here you'll see as I zoom in, uh, we have the yellow. This yellow indicator is now three-hour parking. So to remove some of the confusion for residents and visitors to downtown Puyallup, um, after there was communication, uh, since we did the original study back in twenty twenty with businesses along the Meridian corridor, we made that determination, move it from a two-hour time zone just to three hours, make it simpler, make it easier for people. They know you're parking along Meridian or one of the east-west uh, commercial streets. It's three-hour time zone parking from the street. Uh, we still have over here now the light green is represented. That is eight-hour parking. No changes were proposed to that. We did make some modifications here. Um, we do still have a fifteen-minute zone uh, across the street from the activity center. However, right along the activity center, that has been increased to three-hour parking. You'll notice there's a significant decrease in the dark purple or in this map, it's fuchsia. Uh, that is the four-hour zone. So what we would be proposing is four-hour residential parking here behind City Hall and then two sections over near the high school. Uh, some of these sections would remain in place. Um, they were there prior to the pilot. And then we do have a proposal to add a few more blocks along that area, following community outreach regarding concerns, primarily with uh, the high school in those neighborhoods. And that community feedback was provided to us uh, directly as well as through feedback from the school resource officers with the Puyallup Police Department. So what we are looking for this evening uh, is some feedback on this proposed map. Uh, if you have requested changes to the uh, the times, if you would like to see other modifications made with the plan to come back with a proposed ordinance in the month of October, that ordinance would codify these changes moving forward, and our public works department would uh, quickly get those signs removed. So in the areas where we have the four-hour parking, we would be removing those, removing the posts if they're no longer necessary. And then along with that, as part of that ordinance, we would also be including a minor modification to a section of street near Good Samaritan Hospital at their request, part of their master plan. It's regarding the parking near the emergency department. They just want to shift the language so that instead of the a hundred and fifteen feet of reserved parking for emergency vehicles, I believe they're shifting it to just the first sixty feet. Has to do with the availability of getting vehicles in and out a little bit easier. That was something that Chris Beal talked about last week during his presentation. It's been brought up before. All the parties that are involved, the emergency departments, Good Sam, our planners are all on board with that. We're just lumping it into this cost-effective measure, do one modification to uh, municipal code ten forty versus one update just for that and then a separate update for this.
Okay, um, questions? Councilmember Door.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate the presentation and thank you for showing me the other map. My understanding is there was a stakeholder group involved with this, and have they seen this final proposal?
Uh, my understanding, yes, is that uh, the Economic Development Manager Meredith Neal in the past had met with some of the businesses and looked at and discussed some of these changes. I'm not sure if they have seen this in the last week, but I know this was presented back in November, I believe it was, October, November of last year as the proposed map. And this is what we've been utilizing since we put this in place. And I do believe that this map is also available on our website as part of that three-phase pilot to determine whether this was something that would work for businesses and residents in downtown.
So my preference is before it comes back for an ordinance that that if we have a stakeholder group and we've asked for their input, that they, we have plans and we've talked about that, you know, that end up on a bookshelf somewhere. I don't know that they know that we are at an ordinance stage. So if we're going to engage them and ask them to support us in providing feedback, I would like them to at least, if we have that list, I don't know what, I don't know how it was collected, but if there's an email list of that stakeholder group to send this back out to them so that they see the final product and can provide final comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Adler.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dan. I have a few questions, one of which is, and now my dog has decided to start barking. Um, I have a few questions. Can you, can you share with us residential permit options for the downtown, if they exist? And if so, what that is or what they look like?
Yeah. So historically, residents in the four-hour zone, which again, I'll try to bring that map back up here. This one, all of the dark purple, uh, residents in those areas were provided at their request to stickers. That's what the policy indicated. They would provide proof of residency in the city of Puyallup that they lived in those areas, and then they would just be provided two stickers said residential parking permit. They would put that on their vehicle. Um, those stickers had no expiration date. They had no ability to track to ensure that that vehicle still actually belonged to a resident in the downtown area. And so um, honestly, I could not tell you after spending hours looking at our records, how many of those have been handed out since this program went into place. What my proposal would be for the residents of these two areas, I would be, in my mind, I view them as zone one and zone two. So zone one would be on the left side of your screen. That would be the four-hour zones near Puyallup High School. Uh, those individuals, again, through a portal that I would create, would apply for two residential parking placards. Uh, we would provide those to them. And then the residents in zone two, which would be over on the right side of your screen, would do the same. Uh, the difference is we would use the same technology that we use for the business parking placards. So each one of those would have a barcode on those. We would embed into that barcode the vehicle information. So when our parking enforcement officer is, for example, going near the Puyallup High School and they see someone has parked on the street, they could scan that barcode to ensure that that's a vehicle that is authorized to park on that street for longer than four hours. It's not someone that lives over off of Second Street. It's a student and they're parking their car on the street. The goal of that street parking is for the residents in those neighborhoods. Those placards would have an expiration date of three to four years. And once they um, are near expiration, my office would reach out to them, let them know that they need to get updated placards. Similar to what we do with the business parking placards, if a resident gets a new vehicle, they still have that placard and they need to change it from a, say a Chevy to a Toyota. They just email that to my office so that we have a record of that. I can go in, I can make that update, and they can put that in their brand-new vehicle.
So there is no time limit then if this new system that um, you're proposing that would reflect similar to the business parking permits, there there's not a time limit on them?
No. No, for those residential uh, placards, we would use the same rules and guidelines that we have now. Those residents with that placard will be eligible to park on the street beyond that four-hour timeline.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. I uh, like that and I appreciate it because I think that it provides some equity to those that um, live downtown, work downtown. Um, and I do remain very concerned about individuals that live downtown um, who have more than one vehicle. Um, and if, you know, they have a residential parking space but have two vehicles, you know, they have to keep moving their car um, throughout the neighborhoods, which I think, you know, really doesn't solve any problems. So uh, I spoke about that previously. I appreciate the background on the permits. So I have a few thoughts as my colleagues likely can imagine. And I think for me, this is what this comes down to and what where I am seemingly landing on an ordinance that will ultimately come before council. And I think part of my position at this point is due to the fact that when the pilot project was presented, I was not on council. So um, you know, I I appreciate everyone hanging with me as I think through this as, you know, one of the newer kids on the block. I am still very concerned that the data that has been presented does not, in my opinion, represent demand and usage during high time and high season, like I spoke about uh, the last time that this was on the agenda, which includes the summer, um, not just Saturday market, but Saturday market when the splash pad is open. Um, when we have a Thursday night event. Uh, and there's the concerts in the park, the splash pad is open, and we have the Thursday night market. Um, I'm really concerned about that. Uh, and what has really um, come to my attention since the last meeting where we discussed this is the simple fact that the demand increases on after-hours and weekend special events. You know, the the data presented here reflects usage during Saturday markets. Well, guess what? We don't enforce parking rules on the weekends or after six PM. So I am concerned that, you know, we are making strides here with the proposal or the pilot to turn over parking spaces and provide uh, easier access for individuals to park or find parking. But if this is not going to be implemented during um, high times where we do not generally have enforcement, my question then becomes what is the point? Um, certainly it does help still during the daytime, um, and we will continue to see uh, increased visitors and and demand, but you know, really where we see the challenges, and again, the data reflects it, is during the times that we do not do enforcement. So I I that's kind of where I keep coming back to. Um, and the last thing I'll say is I I'm really struggling to put myself in a place of supporting an ordinance with these proposed changes um, after a period where we have gone without consistent enforcement for a significant amount of time. Um, I think you know, that kind of skews um, the data, uh, particularly during the times that we do enforcement. I would like to see us have consistent enforcement once again and collect data again um, to see what that looks like. I'd also be interested in the infraction data. Is it really um, just due to laps of time and people not turning over, or is it something else? So those are the things that um, you know, when I think about an ordinance before me um, and what is best for Puyallup, whether it's our residents, business owners, um, employees or outside visitors, those are the things that I'm trying to work through um, as I come to my position. So um, again, I appreciate everyone hanging with me. I am very familiar with downtown parking, um, which is probably why I have um, or I have become so passionate about this. Um, so thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitting.
Yeah, there's just a couple of of areas that I'd like to focus on in my comments. The the, obviously, the area up around the high school is is an area of concern. So so I think I think we've got a plan going there and and uh, we'll we'll see how that goes and and react accordingly. The the other thing that, the other aspect of it is we we do have some high-density residential downtown and and the activity center is where Lauren lives is one and and uh, but we'll also have the we're considering development at the AOB lot and some the Bell property. And so there's a number of other areas there. And in in those areas where we have the high-density residential and particularly down by the our our core va- area where we have the farmer's market and all of our events, you know, the you know, that that makes it tough on the. you know, that, that makes it tough on the, on the residents during those time periods, just the way the students make it tough on the residents up by the high school. So, so I'm looking for ways to, to mitigate that. And, uh, the, uh, you know, right across from the pavilion, we've got a high density area there and, and, uh, it's, we take up that, this, the, uh, is that fifth? I can't. Fourth, uh, yeah, fourth, we, we take up and, and, uh, with our food trucks and our, and our et ceteras on the, at the farmer's market and so forth. That Fifth Street, south of that entity, it's, would seem like we ought to, ought to be having some limitations there so that the residents, you know, chase out some of the, some of the people that are coming downtown and in favor of, of allowing the, the, uh, local residents some, some, uh, ability to park near their building, uh, or have guests park near their buildings without too much, uh, too many problems. So, so that, those, that would be my comment, just, just a little more buffer around those. You know, we've got the, the three hour zone outside of the activity center. I'd, I'd suggest we do the same down on Fifth and, and look at doing the same around the, the Bell properties and, and maybe even the west side of the A O B, you know, beyond the, the funeral home there as well. Thank you.
Sir.
Councilmember Gilliam.
Thank you, Mayor Castama. Um, Dan, thanks for hearing us and coming back a second time and getting more clarity. Um, I just had a, a quick question because as, um, Councilmember Adler was, um, highlighting all of her excellent points, especially about timelines and everything. Um, and I, I thought I heard you say, which is why I want to clarify, the fuchsia color is the only area that we'd be handing out residential permit parking? Because I just want to clarify, because I want to make sure that Pete, the residents that live in the yellow also get them.
So in this proposed map, correct, what we would be doing is providing the four hour, i- it's following the same policy that we have in place, which is residents that live in the four hour residential parking zones would allow, would get that, that placard. Of course, we can always modify that if council wishes.
But remind me what color is the yellow again?
Yellow is three hour time parking, Monday through Friday, ninety-six.
So that means if, uh, Councilmember Adler wanted to park on her street, she couldn't have a residential, uh, parking pass? Because it's three hour instead of the four?
Correct. So if I were to go back and view this map here, this is the current, uh, map. Those residential parking stickers are for primarily the people in the four hour zones, which in this map is the dark purple. Now, if council directs that we modify that, and in the current map, you say, everyone in these areas be allowed to get those two residential placards, we can do that.
Okay. Um, I'd like us to consider, or I'd like to get Councilmember Adler's opinion on that because, um, I know she herself, I'm P- in her living situation, I know there's people that have two cars or in one lot to park i- in their condo. Um, so I don't, I don't know. I'd like to open it up for Councilmember Adler to weigh in on that. I just wanted to watch out for people in that's, with these considerations. So I'll just sign out and Councilmember Adler, if you'd like to weigh in, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Okay, why don't, um, if you want to respond, if it's brief, you can respond or after Councilmember Whitting. Councilmember Whitting, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I just, I hadn't tumbled to the fact that the three hours didn't get it. So I'm going to suggest that the, you know, my comments be suggest that there be four hour areas, you know, on Fifth and, and uh, and over beyond the, the A O B lot eventually. Um, and, you know, I, again, we've, that A O B lot is in a state of flux and we, we, we have to be attentive to the, to the seniors coming in and there. So I don't know. You know, I just think we need to have a good, solid solution for, for them and, and I don't know, I'm not wise enough at this point to, to know what that looks like, but, but I want to underline that we need to have that. Thank you.
Councilmember Adler, if you'd like.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Gilliam. Thank you, Councilmember Whitting. Um, I certainly appreciate Councilmember Gilliam's clarification because, um, I was not clear. So the question has illuminated um, further how I feel. Um, so but first of all, I want to make it clear that yes, I, I, I do live, um, in our downtown core above the senior center and anthem. I have one vehicle. I am a single person and I live alone with my two dogs. Um, but I do have visitors often, um, including my own mother. And, um, sometimes she is here for longer than three hours. Now, this is what this is how I feel about if I understand and, and please, Dan, keep me honest and, and correct me if I'm wrong. So in the areas where there are the yellow lines which indicate three hour parking limits, in those areas, residential permits without a time limit would not be permitted.
That's the original proposal. However, if council directs that we implement that, we can easily do that.
So, uh, thank you for that. What I'll say is this, I don't, I don't like that in this proposal, we would have essentially two different residential permitting, um, opportunities. One, you know, to, to the fuchsia areas where sure, you know, you're, they're at a four hour limit. If you live within those, the four hour limit, you can get a parking permit, a residential parking permit and park for however long you want. But if you live on this other side, um, in the three hour designated zones, you can't get a parking permit, a residential parking permit that is time unexpired. I don't like that there's two different options and it just depends on where the zoning was determined, where you live. Um, and to Councilmember Whitting's point, the A O B lot, um, in addition to future high density likely, um, development at whatever time in the next, you know, twenty-five years. Um, that is what my concern is. How, how, you know, how do we make that equitable? And I think that having two different, uh, requirements for residential parking permits do, does not help that. So, um, you know, that, that really concerns me. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to respond, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm kind of tossed around these residential parking passes. I, I guess the intent is good, but I'm just wondering how many of those will get out there? And then we've got pretty much, I'm just going to use an extreme example that everybody parking in there is all residential passes. So what's the purpose of the, of the hourly parking? I mean, you might as just open it up and, and make unlimited parking for anybody. Um, and so I guess I would just kind of question that potential, and, and maybe it's an extreme scenario. I can see where it'd be very, very helpful to have some residential parking um, passes, uh, in areas like around the high school, where you're just going to get invaded every five days a week, every day right in front of your house. That makes sense, but in normal corridors, I'm just wondering, you know, um, uh, i- is it just defeating the purpose? Or we just open it up and let, you know, people park their unlimited period? Well, what, what's our purpose, I guess, um, on that? So, I, I'm kind of, um, you know, are we really fixing a problem? Or first of all, is there a really need um, to have, have those parking passes? Are we really filling everything up to where they have to have that? Um, and do we need to even have parking enforcement, um, on some of these areas? I- is it, does that help us um, to have that, uh, limited timeframe? Or, or are we afraid that if we open it up, people will park there twenty-four seven? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to find out what, what's the purpose of having short term parking for both folks who are either visiting, working, eating, or spending money or living downtown? Why, I mean, can I just come and go and park where you can and, and forget it? So I just want to ask that question. Maybe give me some counsel or thoughts on why we're even doing this in some of the areas. I can see again, areas where it's high density around the high school and schools that makes total sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I think Councilmember Adler, you look like you want to respond.
Well, this is not the Councilmember Adler show, but I appreciate it. I would just say, um, in response to Councilmember Johnson's um, statement, i- in the latter part of your statement, Councilmember Johnson, I, I agree with you. I, I am struggling to find out what is the problem that we are trying to solve.
Yeah.
Frankly, I'm, I'm, can, I keep landing in a place how, in the same place how I felt about the fair private residential parking permitting situation, regulation, which is what is the problem we're trying to solve? I've resisted from saying that um, because I know that I have a lot to learn. And I, as I said earlier, was not on council when the pilot project was presented and, and, um, approved. And so I, I wanted, I'd like to do my due diligence, um, before making statements like that, but, um, I do, uh, you know, also given the various points that I brought up earlier, which is we haven't had consistent enforcement, you know, due to a very unfortunate circumstance. We, um, the, the data for the study, um, to collect the data was not, in my opinion, you know, um, administered during a, a high time and during the times where enforcement is, um, actually happening. And, you know, would, enforcement would be beneficial during those times. I am not advocating for that, but it just seems to me that something got for me, it seems as though wires got crossed somewhere and now I am left to what are we really trying to solve? Thank you.
And Councilmember Adler, if I can perhaps answer and provide some of that backstory. Uh, so in twenty twenty-three, I was, uh, asked to see if we could provide some assistance to help, um, the concern regarding residential parking in downtown Puyallup as well as to uh, create a new program for the business parking placard program. And part of the request was, and again, this is the original map, was with, uh, the downtown business parking placard. The goal was to create a new placard that would be, um, trackable so that there would be better enforcement. As we were looking at that, we looked at the residential parking or the time parking that you see here. And one of the big questions that came up were the residential parking stickers. Those have been provided since the inception of the four hour parking zones originally, uh, primary focus was due to the sound transit parking, where riders would park on residential streets, taking away parking that was valuable for businesses and residents at their homes. Um, part of that concern was, um, the stickers had no tracking capability. So we had no way of knowing whether a resident at a home had requested two stickers or one hundred stickers. Um, and uh, much to Councilmember Johnson's point, there was concerns of, are the stickers even useful at this point? Uh, so as part of that study, we implemented the pilot program and we took away the four hour zones. We streamlined the time zone parking in, uh, downtown. Uh, I met with Director of Public Works, I met with Chief Ingle, met with Meredith Neal, Economic Development Manager, City Manager as well, to put this proposal together. And we brought it back to council to try to streamline enforcement. Uh, as you can see, there's a lot of area that our parking enforcement official would have to cover during the day, um, make things easier for residents to visitors. Um, there are certain streets where you would look at it and, and one block, it's three hours, the next block, it's a two hour time zone. Make things easier there. And just determine what is the actual need going forward since we now have that sound transit garage. And this was the map that we came up with, and this is what we would be proposing because the pilot provided that this was an effective way to answer some of those questions. Um, if council's desire is to say any residential sections that have, um, colored highlighting on them, uh, those residents get a residential parking pack placard, we can do that. And to address the concerns that council had about the tracking of those residential placards, we now have the capability to number them. Parking enforcement can actually confirm that that's still a valid placard, that a resident hasn't sold the vehicle to someone else, left a placard there, and now we have someone who potentially lives in Tacoma, they're coming downtown for the fair, they're staying for the day, and they're parking on a residential street, taking up business parking or residential parking from someone that lives here. We can deactivate those placards, which provides parking enforcement the ability to better enforce that, that time zone. So that was sort of the backstory as to why this came up.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, when I, when I initially posed the question, it was to, um, our city clerk, and I, I, I still would like to have the floor. I wasn't finished yet. I was kind of posing a question. So if that's okay, I'd like to continue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I, I want to just back up on that. So again, I'm, I'm not opposed with going forward with this plan. I'm not going to, you know, uh, you know, you know, make a big deal about it. I guess I, I do want to boil back to where Councilmember Adler said, you know, what's, what's the problem we're trying to resolve? And I think he touched on the problem that we had in the past, but the question is, do we really have the problem now? You know, we, I do remember the days before we had the parking garage and, and Sounder folks were coming in from all over, you know, South Pierce County parking here, they're flooding out the main neighborhood, they're flooding out in the businesses. That's gone now. Uh, and so we really don't have this, I think mammoth crowded parking issue that is, requires enforcement to push those folks out of there. These are just people who live down here, want to shop down here, want to eat here. So the question is, we really want to enforce even having time limits on some of these areas to where we would need residential, you know, passes. Why don't everybody park? Uh, because the, the issue is, is a non-issue now. And then if it becomes an issue or we find that everything's getting clogged up, then maybe we address the problem. It's identified. Once we, you know, determine that, but right now I'm not convinced that we've determined there's a problem. So we're implementing, you know, perhaps, uh, some parking limitations on that, you know, are discriminating against, you know, shoppers and residents and visitors and all these things. Why not just open it up? Uh, I can say, again, I can see around the high school, uh, and other targeted areas where it would be a, a daily problem. Uh, so that's one thing. And the only other thing I could think of that perhaps, and it's a very small sliver of concern, unlike the high school, which I think is a major concern, is, you know, if, if there wasn't timed parking, um, around some of the businesses, a lot of the employees could clog up the retail parking and you want your customers to be able to, you know, park semi-close, not maybe pull up. So that's about the only problem I see that we may be solving to put this whole infrastructure in there, but maybe there was a way to identify employees so they don't do that rather than making everybody us, you know, in this lack of better words, suffer under limited parking when they just want to come downtown, hang out, go to the parks, the spray park, the coffee and visit friends or, or whatever. So I guess I'm just not deter- I guess because we had that Sounder issue, that's a no longer an issue anymore. And I, I want to come back. Is there, is, is this really going to solve a problem? Is, is there a problem to be solved or can we, you know, get away without having to implement all these restrictions because there may not be a, a serious problem on most of the areas with the exception of the high school?
Councilmember Dora.
Thank you. Um, just food for thought for this council. We keep, we talk about transit oriented development. Um, we have heard developer after developer come in and say they want to have the parking, um, reduced. So some of them don't even want one stall per unit. Um, so when we need to think about what it is we're asking for and what it is we are promoting downtown. If we don't have, if, if our intent is not transit oriented development, um, you know, people will choose their neighbor, and I'm not looking to be contradictory at all, but it, if I'm going to buy some, you know, you have, we have two real estate agents up here. If I buy a unit of something, I know what my parking is, and it's my responsibility to work within that framework. If the street parking is going to be for residents, then we need to also think about what we're requiring of our developers. Um, so that, that's just a comment. Thank you. Um, so that that's just a comment, thank you.
Thank you, um, I I would only say, and and I don't think there's any more comments here that. You know, any kind of a vibrant retail area needs throughput, they need to have the availability of. Places for people to go ahead and and to park, and so time limits of some sort just seem to make some sense. Is you just cannot have your prime retail area, of which we have a hundred percent occupancy right now. I I believe we still have that in our downtown core, relies on that that type of a throughput. So I I'm not sure how you get that if you don't have some degree of time limitation. Uh, people will, in essence, squat on. Any of these, they could conceivably do that, which will hurt retail, which will hurt the vibrancy, now there is the absolute. Dynamic of the fact you have people living there, so you're going to have to find. There a compromise, but I think that there is um, there is is a um validity to having. Time limits, would be my two cents worth. Um, so with that, let's go ahead, I believe, um, is that? I think we've come to the end of the agenda, now we just have public comments. And I only have one person here this evening who would like to make a public comment, and I and I don't think I need to go through the. Um. The instructions for public comments, I think he could probably give them better than any of us, but I'll ask him to come forward, keep in mind, you have two minutes. And uh, that's our study session uh limitation, but Paul, please, uh, oh, it's Paul Romich, just so everyone knows.
Thank you, Mayor Castama, Paul Romich, District One. Uh. I want, I want to speak in favor of what's um the preferred alternative that staff and the consultants brought forth. Um, you know, they took feedback from um the community uh at least four separate times. Um, you know, with a workshop that I know now Councilmember Gilliam was at, um, two online. Surveys and then the draft E I S uh. Comments as well, which were open online and then as well as a a public hearing uh in person here at City Hall. The results of those comments, along with uh the community advisory group and their input there, um, putting in. Five sessions, and I think they're meeting for a sixth, along with Planning Commission, came up with what we saw tonight. So going against that, um. Seems like it's a bit uh spiteful, you know, in terms of what the community's been inputting. Uh, as well as what the experts that we pay, you know, uh, both our in-house experts uh in Katie and Kendall, but also. Our um the consultants that, you know, we hire to bring that ex- outside expertise. Uh, so just hoping to, you know, we we lean on that, their expertise some more uh and go over with their facts, their research. What's working, um, you know, and and what what's required as well as.
Thirty seconds?
Just considering where our contentions lie, why are we providing contention, is this feeling? Over fact, or is is this coming from a place where um? Ask, so ask yourself, where is that coming from? And then also ask the why of, you know, like, okay, why do I feel this way? And, you know, if you're if you're unable to. Give solid answers to that, where like the community is actually inputting this, if this isn't coming from something where the community's already input. The.
Mr. Mayor, speakers reach two minutes.
Entirely valid, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, great that, so um, is there anyone else who'd like to speak, who has not signed up? Okay, um, and there is no executive session, so with that, folks, thank you for this long study session.